All right, welcome everybody. We've concluded the question and answer session and now I'm going to call to order the regular school board meeting of March 19th, 2018. We do have a quorum tonight and I would like to start by having John review just the highlights of the meeting.
Thank you Chair. Well, tonight you'll work to approve the minutes. We got recognition. I will save those announcements for recognition because it's pretty exciting. Consent. On reports and discussion tonight, we'll have a presentation by Randy and team on the high school personalized learning experiences. We're going to give you the first reading on the 2018-19 budget. Presentation and discussion for school board meeting dates for next year and then you have some policy updates that will be presented by the Board Policy Committee. For action tonight, you're going to be making a decision on school start and end times, both approving the schedule and the year that it will be implemented. Also be for action, approving the partial roof replacement furniture package and an additional -- and then the policy update 628 can be moved. And then we have some information on enrollment and staff recognition. So that's it for the meeting.
All right, thank you. Owen, did you have a motion?
I did. I would like to move that we move policy 628 from action to discussion. Second.
Any questions about that? Hearing that all in favor of moving policy 628 from action to discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you Owen. All right. So that will be E under discussion. Please remind me when we get there. All right, next, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the February 26, 2018 regular meeting, February 26 work session, March 1 special enclosed meeting and the March 6 special meeting?
Some moved.
Second. Are there any changes to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And we are on to recognition. We have the privilege of having a number of recognitions tonight. Troy, are you starting us off?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, with the girls hockey team slowly come to the front. Bravo. Come on. (applause) Is this on? Can you hear me? All right. So my name is Troy Stein. I'm the Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at the high school and extremely proud to present to you tonight our back-to-back Minnesota State High School League.[196.12][196.12](applause) Girls hockey state double A champions. Way to go ladies. It was a fantastic year and this team exemplified the best of what we offer in terms of great participation. They work extremely hard, they're passionate, and they're well coached by the staff over here. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to start on this end and I'm going to have them introduce themselves and one aspect of the season that you're going to remember most and then share that out and then just pass the mic on down. So introduce yourself, give us your name and your grade and then one aspect you enjoyed most.
Great, I get to start. My name is Annie Keel. I'm a junior and one aspect I'm going to take away from this season is that hard work pays off. Yeah.
I'm Olivia Swaim. I'm a junior as well and one thing I'll remember the most is fun pre-game rituals.
I'm Savannah Atal. I'm a senior and I'll always remember just like playing, I don't know, playing with these very cool people and just going every day and playing hard.
My name is Evelyn Adams. I'm also a junior. Well, she's a senior, but I'm a junior. And the thing that I remember the most is just bonding with these girls every day.
I'm Brooke Tucker. I'm a senior and something I'll remember from this season is just making new memories with these girls and yeah.
I'm Megan Smith. I'm also a senior and I guess I'm just going to remember being able to play with a bunch of really talented people.
I'm Emily Oden. I'm a senior and what I'm going to remember most is when you say it twice.[310.02][310.02](laughter)
I'm Lucy Bowlby. I'm a junior and I think I also remember being the first two teams to win state for girls hockey.
I'm Lucy Bowlby and I'm a sophomore and I'll remember most meeting new people.
I'm Sophie Adol. I'm a sophomore as well and I'll probably remember the teammates most and being with them every day.
I'm Hannah Chorski. I'm a freshman and I will remember our crazy superstition the most.
I'm Mallory Line. I'm a junior and I'll remember the memories with the teammates and the seniors.
I'm Ellie Lee. I'm one of the coaches, not in a grade.[352.22][352.22](laughter) I will remember just coaching an incredible group of girls.
I'm Sammy Reber. I'm the head coach. Yeah, I mean everything that these girls said I could absolutely agree with and it's definitely going to be a year that we'll never forget.
I want another round of applause for them.[372.62][372.62](applause) So what I find so impressive is that while they all compete extremely hard and they all want to win, they all take away the basics of team and that's playing together, having fun together and building memories together. That was the common theme. Coach Reber, so this is Sammy Reber who's an Edina High School grad, played hockey at Harvard, coached a little bit at the University of Minnesota Duluth and then we convinced her to come back to Edina High School to take over this program two years ago. Tell us a little bit about what it takes to get these girls to play at this high level that you're able to do.
Well, um, do you want me to hold this?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, they're extremely talented on paper, probably some of the best talent in the state, let alone in the country. But it's just them coming together as a team, working for each other, playing for each other, not playing as a bunch of individuals, which has been so fun for us to see as a coaching staff and has been a big reason why we've been able to be so successful.
Awesome. Well, we appreciate all of that you do as coaches and your guidance and dedication to the program. So with that, Mr. Wallen Friedman, would you get the team together and take a little picture with them with their commendation?
I'm going to hand the commendation to the coach.
Thank you very much.
Awesome.
And then everybody squeeze in.
Let's get in, let's squeeze in for a group picture. Couple rows, yeah.
Lucy, do you want to hold this?
Sure. Yeah, Lucy. You've got a Sammy squad, yeah. Okay Sammy, yeah. Yeah. She's a good one, sure. Did you see? It's about to turn. We were like, oh.
Thank you.[478.12][478.12](applause)
Thank you Troy. Thanks Troy. Who's next? Next, we have recognitions of several volunteers in the district. Our presenter is Karen Rorick.
Hi there, thank you for having us. If you guys want to come up, from champion hockey teams to champion volunteers, we have a mixture of our human and canine companions.
Puppy dogs.
I hope everybody can see, we've got Phil up here is a Springer Spaniel and Oscar is a Golden Retriever, not to be outdone by Nick Balgetty who is originally from Long Island.[519.97][519.97](laughter) Just really quick, I want to let everybody know that we are actually heading into April, which is National Volunteer Month, so we're looking forward to celebrating the hundreds of parent, community member and high school student volunteers who support our classrooms and our programs year-round. Just some quick stats about our robust volunteer program. Over the course of last year, which includes the summer volunteers, we had over 18,000 hours of support, which translates into over $450,000 in donated time and that is what these people are all a part of. We also had 448 classroom presentations throughout the school year through our Curriculum Resources Program. But tonight we want to highlight the volunteers here at the front of the room who are also being honored for their work by the larger community. Nick Balgetty here in the center. He assists teacher Deb Johnson in the Options Classroom at EHS. Options is a state-approved alternative learning program that provides students a second chance to design and pursue a graduation plan. Nick tutors students three to four times a week and is onsite for several hours each visit. Nick takes on a variety of tasks including one-on-one student support, leading small group lessons and helping Deb create curriculum. As Deb Johnson stated, he is great at meeting students where they are at their level and re-teaching or differentiating until a solution clicks for them. Nick served our country during his time in the Army. He's traveled to Morocco to teach ESL. He's fluent in French and is a champion kickboxer. He excels at everything he sets his mind to and we are incredibly grateful that his journey has led him to volunteering at EHS. This month Nick was recipient of the Connecting with Kids Award from the Edina Community Foundation. So congratulations to Nick.[632.16][632.16](applause) And I'm just going to have him share with you guys what drives him to volunteer and what his favorite part is with working with EHS students.
Hi, thanks Karen. My drive to actually volunteer at Edina High School is going to help promote mathematics as a concrete tool, not as abstract science, in terms of, as a concrete tool that you can use to improve their decisions in life and succeed in life. So I approach mathematics as applied science as opposed to just theorem and an abstract approach. And the reason I keep coming back to Edina High School is I do appreciate the contact with the students. They're full of energy and they always ground me and like, there's always options and there's always hope in the future, so it's, I do value my time in the high school. Thank you very much.[684.12][684.12](applause)
All right, and last but not least here, if any of you walk through the halls of Normandale, you may cross paths with Phil and Heidi Sargent or Oscar and Lee Strauss. Five years ago, Phil officially became the first tailwagon tutor as he and Heidi began their journey volunteering by listening to students read and practice math games. Apparently, dogs also enjoy networking because three years later, Phil and Heidi recruited Oscar and Lee to join their ranks. Both dogs are certified through the Therapy Dogs International Program and love patiently listening to the students read to them or work through their math problems. Normandale is lucky to have two pet therapy dogs and their generous owners who provide the learners an opportunity to grow their skills in a non-threatening environment. As Principal Chris Holden says, "Normandale has gone to the dogs and the students and staff couldn't be happier about it." These four volunteers will be honored next month at the City of Edina Volunteer Awards Reception. Want to give them a round of applause?[751.56][751.56](applause) So I'm just going to quickly ask Heidi to tell us a little bit more about Phil and what your inspiration was in starting a therapy program with Normandale.
So Phil is an English Springer Spaniel. He's six years old and I've been training and showing dogs for over 20 years and when I got Phil as a puppy, he was the calmest, kind of a lazy dog, which is not what people think of when you think of an English Springer Spaniel. And so I thought, well, I'll try this whole therapy thing, go to the hospital, see how it pans out. And as I get into it, find out that you can go to the school or that there's this, you know, kids reading to dogs. And so I brought it to Normandale once we finished our certificate and they said, yeah, let's give it a try. So we started with our success center, which at Normandale is kids that need extra help in reading and math and so the children read to us. They read to us in French, so I have some second grade French vocabulary.[822.73][822.73](laughter) Phil's probably better at it than I am. But anyway, he loves to go and coming into the school tonight, as he does every time, drags me in. That's the most excited this dog gets is when we are coming into the school. He can't get in there fast enough.
And then Billy, if you will tell us about your favorite part of volunteering and what does Sir Oscar like to do when he's not working?
Sure. So Oscar would tell you that his favorite part of volunteering is definitely all of the pats and loves and snuggles that he gets on Mondays and Wednesdays when we go to Normandale from the students and the staff as well. And my favorite part of volunteering is the variety of connections that Oscar has made with the students over the last year and a half that we've been doing this. It could be connections with students who are just coming out to have fun and read and clearly it's a happy highlight of their day. It could be connections with a student who is having a tough moment in their day and you can tell by the way that they pat Oscar or talk to him and read to him that it's very reassuring and comforting to spend some time with him for their day. Could also be students who have a fear of dogs. We have a few of those who start out a little bit away from Oscar when they're reading and then it's fun to see over the next few weeks or even months how they inch closer and closer to Oscar as they feel more comfortable with him. And I remember one girl in particular last year who was afraid of dogs, but after a few weeks, she would always keep a little distance between herself and Oscar but always had one hand on him when she was reading to him. And that was really special to see that happen. And finally, as Heidi said, the original reason why we started it was to help students, especially who need a little extra practice with their reading. So it's fun to see the progress of reading over time with these students and to think that these dogs are even just a small part of that is also very special. So in Oscar's free time, I'd say there's, there are two things that he loves to do the most. The first would not surprise you at all and that's to spend time with our two daughters who are here. He loves to lie near them when they're playing, have them read to him, or even practice some of their dog training skills. But the other part would surprise you. Overall, Oscar is a very mellow, calm dog, but he's also a bit of a goofball. So he loves to wrestle and play very hard with his older brother Riley and his younger sister Lucy, both Golden Retrievers as well. So he has fun doing that.[1002.54][1002.54](applause)
Karen? Karen? Before you sit down, I just had to let you know that when a community member saw that you were presenting up here, they texted me and said that I had to call you out. And they said, they said, "You have to say this," though I did have to change the language for one word that they used, "that Karen is one of the best darn people and employees in the district. She has an absolute rock star and make sure that she's recognized as well." So I wanted to make sure you were recognized.[1080.13][1080.13](applause)
Wow, great group of people. So historically, at the end of our board book, we have a staff recognition listing that I go through and there was a suggestion raised that we move that up towards the front and so we do have a recognition of one of the staff members. This was an email that was sent in by a family commending Jessica Freilich, who is a language arts teacher at the high school. Basically, the parent wrote in to thank her for the work that she did as a teacher as well as the support that she continued to give that students in general even after they graduate. So again, thank you for Jessica Freilich.[1120.08][1120.08](applause)
Chair Wallen Friedman, I also want to recognize, just shout out to our ninth grade government class. I can all wave really high so everyone knows where you're seated, all of you. Oh, they're not, they're not listening to this. Well, welcome.[1140.08][1140.08](laughter)
All right. Next, we have hearings from members of the audience. Every month at seven o'clock, we do have a three-minute period for people to come and give comments to the school board. We do have a number of people that have signed up. Our rules for the seven o'clock meeting is to limit your comments to three minutes. Please don't make any comments about individuals at all. If you have comments about individuals, those should be addressed directly to the superintendent. We do not typically have discussion of the items that are presented. We do have a 6:30 time period where questions can be asked and those are discussed. So we also welcome emails, of which we have been getting a few lately. So our first speaker tonight is David, I think it's Bice.
Yep, Bice.
Welcome. Just grab a microphone.
Thank you very much. Is this on? Assuming this is on?
Yes.
Thank you very, very much for serving you guys. You guys put in a lot of time. I appreciate that, I really do. My name is David Bice and on September 28th, there was a request that US flags be put up in the high school. And those US flags were, at that point in time, we were told that they were lost in construction. On October 26th, we put in another request for flags to be put up in the classrooms and we were told at that point in time that we weren't able to do that because of construction in the school. On November 16th, we put in a third request. Each one of these requests were documented and again, the request was denied. On November 9th, 2017, there was a Veterans Day Assembly that went on at the school. I'm sure you guys remember that. I don't know if any of you were there. It was held in the high school gym. Everyone was in the bleachers. Eleven students from the Black Student Union were allowed to come in onto the gym floor led by an assistant principal. And it was at the point in time that during the plane of taps, that those students happened to sit down while everyone else was standing at attention. But they didn't just sit down quietly, they sat down and started playing loud rap music on their phones. That's what most people don't understand. And what happened after that was a video was made of those students doing this and then it was posted on Twitter and it was posted by a member of the YCC. What happened after that was a backlash that came on social media towards that student that I can't repeat the things that were said, the threats that were made to that student and those students if you're associated with the YCC. And the school became really, really divided at that point in time. My daughter was part of all that and anyway, I don't want to drone on about that, but what I can say is that there were remarks that were made to members of the YCC that nobody really knows about that were horrible. In response to that, on a private group MeChat, there were some remarks made by YCC students internal to that private group MeChat. While nobody was proud of what those remarks were, nobody knew about those remarks and in fact, the president of the YCC actually reprimanded those four students for doing that and took them out of about a 200-person group MeChat, removed them for some of the things that they said. There was, I would just call it, I guess, a mole inside that group MeChat that thought it'd be good if they printed that stuff and turned that in and turned that over to the members of the BSU, which then resulted in a meeting with those four boys with the administration and they were ultimately suspended. Two of those kids filed lawsuits that there is nothing being discussed about those lawsuits. The kids won't talk about it and which, being a business person, being around the block several times, I'm sure that those kids were gagged and in other words, they weren't allowed to discuss it because I'm guessing that there was some payment made. That aside, we ultimately, and I'm one of the parents of one of the plaintiffs, we ultimately filed a lawsuit against the school mainly for flag code violations, but also for disbanding the group Me app of the YCC. After that was all done, those four kids were suspended, the group Me app was, had to be removed, had to be taken down is what was said, which literally disbanded the Young Conservatives Club. So a lawsuit was filed at that point in time mainly because we were upset about flags not being in a public school.
So Mr. Bice, the idea was to keep it to three minutes and so I understand you've got, so you're going to need to wrap this up.
Yep, no problem. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that there was no payment made to any of the plaintiffs. I also wanted to make sure that the board knew that the, the school district has a dis, on your liability insurance, there's a deductible that needs to be paid per case, per lawsuit. And I'm guessing that there was quite a bit of money that was funded from the district and I wanted to make sure that the citizens of Edina knew this and I wanted to make sure that you guys as school board members knew this. This didn't need to go to a lawsuit. This could have been settled over a cup of coffee. But instead, it took three months for a settlement to finally be reached where we achieved everything that we wanted to get. I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that, that there was money paid out by the district for a lawsuit that didn't have to happen.
All right, thank you. Next will be Lionel Dorville. Please no applause. Please, we do not applaud during these things so that we can continue to get and hear the speakers that have signed up to speak. Mr. Dorville?
Welcome. Thank you for your time, everyone. Okay, my son is a student within the district and I tell his story not for empathy or sympathy but for a clear understanding of what he experiences within the district. Recently, he lost his Edina, a former Edina student, last corporal Kevin Placide, which he considered to be his brother, passed away. His grandma passed away, so my son has had to endure a lot. One of those I'm not too proud of is something he experienced in hockey, in youth hockey, where I told him it was okay to walk away. He told me he made a commitment, he wanted to stick with it. So for him, I'm just encouraged by his strength that I don't know where it comes from. I take some credit, but that's something within him. Recently, under your student conduct policy 506, my son experienced what I would refer you to number 35 and 38, which is your abusive language policy. So throughout the year so far, he has been called, in the quotes, he has been called a nigger. They don't call him the N-word or say the N-word. To his face, he's been called a nigger five times in his school. I didn't receive a call from the principal informing me of what happened. I heard from other parents of the students that were the perpetrators. Under your policy, if a student is under K5 and under, there is no clear disciplinary policy for the offender. So now, my son, who is the victim of this verbal abuse, nothing is done to protect him. After each incident involving a white student, it is said, "This is a good kid, that's his friend." I'm 37 years old, went to predominantly white schools and I have lifelong friends that have never called me a nigger. So for my son, it is a struggle for him to try to reconcile that these kids are calling him these names. We have a zero tolerance policy within the district, but no one protects him. As a discipline, a student is literally sent home after calling him a nigger repeatedly for the third time, sent home for an hour. Now, I'm okay with whatever discipline the district chooses to use, but I only ask you to understand, every time a kid of color has been called a nigger by someone, just imagine that could be their first time ever experiencing that and how do they reconcile that? There's no mental support for them, there's no one consoling them and the parents aren't brought in to get input. So again, my son has to deal with all of this at 11 and the district and his school principal find it okay to justify others' behavior by saying, "Well, he's a good kid. The family is good." And it's just for me, and I won't throw out numbers because you know them better than I do, but kids of color on your disciplinary spectrum represent a dis- I do, but kids of color on your disciplinary spectrum represent a disproportionate number of those who are suspended, or some form of actions taken against them, whereas their white counterparts are given discretion. And that's where that bias come in, that for me, I find unfortunate. So I would only encourage you to look at policy 506, your own student code of conduct, policy number 35 and 38, and you will see, students aren't looked at as victims. If you say any other slur towards a cultural group, it is offensive, it is hard to hear. But for some reason, people are comfortable with hearing "nigger" or saying "nigger" to other students, and the only reprimand is, they don't know, they're still learning. At some point, I think we have learned, and we need to move forward. So I would only encourage you to please strengthen the policies that are already on the books, and make sure you're looking at these students who are on the receiving end of that verbal abuse as victims, that need to be treated with some kind of empathy and respect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person, I'm sorry, I only have a first name, it looks like, Brooke? I said Brooke. All right, we'll go with Carolyn Jackson?
Good evening, and thank you very much.
Welcome.
Is it on? Okay. So, thank you, I'm here to talk about a bill that's currently in front of the legislature. It's Senate File 2487, and it's a direct response to the District of Edina's All-for-All policy. And I'm here to ask you tonight to send a letter to the legislature to oppose this bill. There have been two hearings on it so far in the Senate. There were parents from the city of Edina who testified, there were teachers from the Edina School District that testified, but there was no statement from the Edina School Board or from the district. And I would like you to, I respectfully request that you would send in a letter opposing this bill. It seeks to limit multicultural education in the state, and it will have a chilling effect on addressing racism and other emotional topics in our school. When the teachers are standing up, and the students are standing up, on behalf of the school district, I think it would be appropriate to hear from the school board as well. One of the things that this act would do is limit critical thinking. It would prohibit teachers from assigning students to argue on behalf of something that they don't believe in. This would essentially kill debate, and debate class and debate competition. And it would also be very difficult to have a teacher given assignment where you had to see something from a different point of view, and that's essential to critical thinking. I want to read for you the all-for-all statement from the district. "Edina Public Schools Led A Strategic Planning Revision Process From January Through May Of 2012. Community Members And School Staff Joined Together In Studying The Current State Of The District And Discussing Suggestions/Recommendations For Improvement. One Particular Outcome Of Those Conversations Was A Clear Message From The Community That Achievement Gaps Predictable By Race And Income Are Unacceptable." So this was not a randomly selected policy, it was very carefully put together, and I would ask you to defend it at the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maria Laux. Ms. Laux, are you going, where are you? We haven't seen you in a while?
Yes. Didn't quite know how this worked, so I figured I'd ask the questions then and give the statement out, so.
Okay, well, you're welcome.
Try this again?
Okay.
That one works better. All right, hello again. I know the board is in the process of discussing a strategic plan for the district, as you mentioned, and as part of this strategic plan, I would like to ask the school board to have the administration improve the evaluation of curriculum, educational initiatives, and schools. I think it's great to have a vision, and I have absolutely no doubt that the intentions of the administration and all teachers are the best. However, any successful organization needs to have a robust feedback loop to make sure that they are beating their goals. Successful organizations set clear goals, gather objective data, analyze data thoroughly, and use what they learn to improve. Over the years, I have spoken at length with the superintendent and members of the administration about my concerns that they are implementing many new initiatives without properly measuring the impact. I have been told, and I quote, "true learning cannot be measured." And I've also been told that the administration is waiting for strategic direction from the board. I have asked for two years why there are no student surveys given by the administration to evaluate curriculum, and have been repeatedly told that this is a work in progress. With that in mind, I bring to this board, I bring this to this board in the hope that the strategic plan encourages the creation of a robust evaluation process for curriculum, educational initiatives, and schools. Here are some specific suggestions that I have, that I believe would improve the evaluation process. Number one, move the MAP test back to the fall from the winter, it was moved two years ago, and use the MAP test to measure growth as one input of evaluating schools and curriculum. It is the most appropriate test for measuring growth. Number two, analyze MAP scores to understand the impact of curriculum across multiple dimensions, including race, special populations, and including the starting score of individual students, so we know we are serving students across the ability spectrum. Number three, implement district-wide student surveys on a regular basis that help evaluate curriculum. Learners have the ability to give feedback about the pace and depth of the curriculum. With our focus on personalized learning, I am concerned that the choice of the student to flex out of classes and do their own thing is viewed as a success when it could also be interpreted as feedback that the curriculum is too easy and too slow for many learners. Number four, make sure that the world's best workforce and the assessment committees include community members that are knowledgeable about objective data gathering and analysis, and empower these committees to make recommendations to the board that improve our processes. The goal of robust evaluation system is to understand what is working and what is not working in an objective and thoughtful manner. In order for this to work, the group doing the assessment has to be objective. Given the pressure to be successful, it is going to be very tempting for any administration to skew results to show successes. The school board needs to understand this and make sure the evaluation process has checks in place to assure objective and thorough analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Heather Teetz.
So I'm going to be reading an email I sent on Friday. "Members of the Board, I'm seeing a renewed publicity push for personalized learning, but we haven't answered any of the questions I and many parents have been asking about PL since the beginning. What is the plan for personalized content? What is our plan to measure and track..." Thank you, Maria. "...what impact, positive or negative, PL is having on academic achievement of all learners? What do we have to show for the PL trials we've been running for the past four-plus years, other than anecdotal stories about student engagement? Since we are having PL open houses and sharing stories, I would like to share a personalized learning opportunity in 7th grade science at Valley View, which is a perfect example of PL that does nothing to advance academic achievement. The students take some form of pre-test, sometimes a quiz online, sometimes write a short paragraph, sometimes draw a diagram, et cetera. Based upon results, kids are broken into two or three groups, with the teacher taking anyone who scores below X. The other groups all do something independently, by themselves or in small groups, with the what determined by their score. Usually, the highest-scoring group has to do something that is more work and time-consuming, but the work completed in these small groups usually does not contribute to their summative grade. So there's no incentive. It becomes, don't do badly enough to be in the teacher group, but don't bother to put any effort into the pre-test or activities. They hurry through them so they can do other homework during the time allotted, because it might be over several days, or talk with their friends. Then after that, there's usually a lab, or reading, or note-taking that happens before the students take the actual test, which is what the grade is based on. I'm guessing the teacher and the administration would consider this differentiated content, based upon the pre-test scores. But the work isn't challenging, it doesn't allow for any ability to go through content faster, or bypass content already understood. It just differentiates which level of busy work the student must complete that has little or no impact on the grade. So we are once again asking, or needing, the students to choose to go deep. Remember that? And with no real benefit for them, other than the intrinsic. In my email below, and this is an email I wrote in April of 2017, that basically said the exact same thing, and that was read in the minutes at that time. "I asked the board to ask questions about personalized content when hearing about PL. I would like to make another request. Please ask if any of the personalized learning activities are part of the summative grade. If you are told they are part of the formative grading, ask what percentage of the formative grade the total grade is based upon. A very normal class split is 10% formative and 90% summative." As a side note, we've been hearing about PL again, a lot, but we haven't had any update at the board level or the GTDAC about the promised acceleration and enrichment activities coming out of the gifted education study findings shared in spring of 2017. We also haven't heard anything about the previous board's request to understand if we could provide enriched classes all three years of middle school for all of the non-math core courses, language arts, science, and social studies, rather than having one or two enriched courses offered for each grade. May I ask that the board follow up on these expected activities? I look forward to seeing you all on Monday. Any questions, please feel free. And I'm Heather Teetz, I'm a mother of a 7th grade Valley View student and a Normandale 4th grader. So, here's the concept. If it's not contributing to the grade, the kids know it, it's not relevant. So if we're truly going to try and say PL is meeting about academic rigor, and about meeting the needs of all students in academic achievement, then we need to make sure it's something that is appropriate level of rigor and counts toward the grade. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is, all right, again, could we please hold the applause? Next is Carmen Neisham.
Hope I have the right mic. Is this the right one?
That's the right mic, yes. Welcome.
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm here to talk about the early start time or the decision that you're making this evening, and I know that you've had other opportunities to talk, but I have had, been out, I had some ankle surgery and have been on a medical leave, so tonight is my first chance. So I would really appreciate just being, hearing my message tonight. I have a prepared statement, but I think I just want to talk for a minute, so something I'm going to reach from. But let me just tell you, I am a nationally board certified, my name's Carmen Nussheim, I'm a nationally board certified teacher, and I have been for 20 years. I have given my heart and soul to this school district. I have a master's degree in curriculum instruction, I've got an education specialist degree, and I've completed some doctoral studies, all of that on early childhood, early elementary learning, and best practices. And I come here tonight with a story and a message, and my message is to really hear out the importance and the significance of really, why it matters to change the start times for elementary to the earlier time. And, you know, I thought through this, I have scads of research, all kinds of things, I share way more than three minutes worth, and so I really struggled to bring this down to three minutes. And here's my story. There's really two important things that I need you to hear. One doesn't take any research, and that's that little children wake up early, they have a little fixed window of stamina, and they're kind of done by the afternoon. And secondly, it really matters, and the priority needs to be, and this is all my educational training has taught me, that what really matters are those foundational skills, and knowing that our youngest learners come out of school so that they can do this higher learning things at the middle school and the high school, without a lot of extra gaps. And here's the problem, when we have the kids at school till 4 o'clock, they're done learning by 3:00. Please listen, they are really, really done, and as an educator who comes with high energy, do anything and everything I can to entertain and keep these kids engaged in learning, it's really, really hard for me to come and do my job and feel good about the job I do. I come to work hard, and it's hard to do that when the kids are just checked out. Their little window of learning developmentally is in the morning, the early risers, they wake up, this is developmental. I've done a lot of research from the National Association of Education of Young Children, and they have some policy statements that will support this, and the other piece I need you to know is they have something called the optimal zone of learning. And that talks about how they can be available, there's developmental nature of their executive functioning, and it's probably the most critical reason for making this decision to move and to support it. And I think, I believe, from all I've learned, is probably as important as the research you have on adolescent sleep time moving back. It moves back because it starts with the younger ones at an earlier time and changes. So what happens with their, the five and six-year-olds are just beginning to develop cognitive skills to do focus and engagement, I just got to check my notes, for the critical reasoning, their, all of their learning skills, being able to screen out distractions and all kinds of things like that are just beginning when they're five and six, those things don't really mature and become developed until middle school. So when these kids are not even able to focus later on in the afternoon and screen out those distractions, we're trying to do foundational skills during a time when kids are just not really available. And with developmental things, you can't force it, it's not going to happen. We can, I can do all the bells and whistles in the world, trust me, I do, I'm like, wear every costume you can think of to show up to entertain, and it just isn't learning. So what I'd like you to do is to consider the benefits of moving. It extends the morning time, and instead of two hours in the morning and about 60 to 90 minutes of instructional time, to closer to three hours of instructional time in the morning, which more closely matches the kids' learning. And for that reason, I would like you to really consider that. And you've got a lot of elementary, you've got six grade levels that this impacts, and we have some of the best elementary school teachers, and we all come with our heart and souls to come and do a good job, but I can tell you, most of us are really, really having a hard time keeping these kids here at school past 3:00. So as you make that decision, I would really like you to consider the developmental nature of their learning, as important as this research that there is for sleep for the middle schoolers. If you want more, I'm more than happy to spend lots of time with you to go over a lot of this. But thank you for hearing my message tonight, and please, let us do the best that we can for these kids and teach those foundational skills. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. That concludes the hearing from members of the audience. Thank you, everybody, we do appreciate the input from the public, and again, as I pointed out, we do have a 6:30 session that occurs prior to the 7 o'clock session, and that 6:30 session is a little bit more interactive. All right, we are now turning to consent agenda. Is there a request to remove anything from the consent agenda? Otherwise, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All right, all of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, and we are on to reports and discussion, and we are starting actually with personalized learning.
Good evening, school board, Chair Wallen Freeman, Superintendent John Schultz, community members. We have a number of staff and students here this evening to talk about some of the work being done at the high school level. My name is Randy Smazl, I'm Director of Teaching and Learning, I'll do a couple of introductions here. We have Alex Goltz on my far left, who is a mathematics instructor at the high school. We have Annie Beaton, our high school principal. We have Leanne Thol, who is our school psychologist at the high school. We have Leanne Thol, who is our school psychologist at the high school. We have Kristen Benson, one of our language arts teachers at the high school, and we have Taylor Johnson, our, one of our counselors at the high school, and then a couple of writing coaches, and I'll have them quickly introduce themselves.
I'm Caleb Limindal, I am a senior.
And I'm Anna Longquist, and I'm a junior.
Part of our, so I'm trying to advance this, it's not working, there we go. Okay, so part of our process over the last few months is around just updating the board and our community on some of the progress around personalization, and this, as a reminder to our community, is, it's one of the core strategies in the strategic plan currently, is to advance the personalized learning experiences for all students, and so we're doing this three-part series. We did middle schools back in February, we're doing high school this evening, and we'll have elementary schools coming up this next month. So, sitting at the core of this framework are really these three pillars. This idea of proficiency-based progress is really about advancing based on where you're at with the standards. And we have a lot of work to do around that, but the premise is that students will advance their learning based on the standards that they're proficient upon. And so part of that is really understanding the student's academic performance, and their growth, and the learning experience. Learner profiles is about knowing the learner, and helping the learner know themselves as a learner, so knowing their strengths and challenges as a learner, because those elements play into the academic design in the classroom. And customized learning paths is about helping to find those pathways that maximize engagement and empowerment for our learners. Now, we have a design team that we've recently developed that has administration and teachers on it, and the goal of the design team is to help develop the strategic action steps and goals, as we move the personalization strategic core element forward. And on the design team, we have some high school members, middle school members, elementary members, and early childhood members. So part of their work is to develop, help develop common language across the district, figure out how we're going to continue to monitor our progress, determine what professional development needs exist with staff, and then what communication needs exist as well. When students leave Edina Public Schools, there are many things that they will carry with them, and sitting at the core of that are these six competencies. These competencies represent the outcome of the high school, and of our middle schools and our elementaries. In addition to meeting all, this is in addition to meeting all local, state, and national standards, as they're assigned through their academic pathways. The goal when they leave us is that we have responsible citizens, who are effective communicators and collaborators, who are globally aware, they're innovative problem solvers, they're motivated to learn, unlearn, and relearn, things that they'll need with them in life, all while being able to manage their own wellness, which is a increasingly challenging task for our young people. And the challenge is for our young people to demonstrate that they have these competencies prior to leaving Edina Public School, not just simply to expect that they have them when they leave us, and so that's part of the proficiency-based progress. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Andy Beaton, our high school principal, to talk about these core components at the high school in a little more depth.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the invitation, Superintendent Schultz, members of the board. So it's a great pleasure to be here with some of our outstanding staff and students here. I don't want to be too redundant on some of the things that Randy talked about, in terms of the core components, but essentially, and I can break some of these down, about some things that are happening at the high school, but also some things that are in progress. You know, one of the key elements coming in, new to the high school, is what I determined is kind of a framework that we look at, and that framework really is about preserving the core, and the tradition of excellence that has been at Edina High School, but also at the same time stimulating progress. So, I think it's really important when we talk about personalized learning, this is not an either-or. By doing personalized learning, we do not lose excellence at the high school, we do not lose the outstanding teaching, and instruction, and goals of our students. So it's an and, and I think it's just important that we're looking at those things that are fit for the high school that makes sense, but really, how do we continue to move forward? So, as Randy talked about, some core components that resonate with the high school, the learner profiles, is really about getting to know what students need to learn in terms of their content and curriculum, but also about the student themselves. So I think that's, that's the key idea from here. Proficiency-based progress is you're seeing some changes, is about time being the variable, and learning being the constant, you've heard that before. So essentially, how do we look at students that can accelerate more quickly, and get to proficiency? How do other students need more time to be able to be proficient? With the end goal of all of our students meeting their potential. You see some examples that we've put here up on the slide. For example, over spring break, we have a group of students that's going to China, another group that's going to Spain, to do language study, to do global studies, to do cultural studies. So these would be some examples that would be different pathways than the tradition. So the tradition that will still be there, but also some new opportunities. And ultimately, customized learning paths is also some things, some examples that we put up there around capstone, which is similar to how we do independent study. How do we have a culminating senior project that's in-depth, for our students to be able to tie that to their post-secondary plans, or an area of passion? We've had some discussions about choosing career majors, you know, not that we all don't change our minds over the course of our lives, but having some focus around instruction. And I know that the counselors and Taylor's going to talk a little bit about how they're aligning those four-year plans. And then, the basic concept is how do we create pathways for students versus pipelines? So pathways would be individualized, some opportunities of choice, not just one size fits all. So with that, I'm going to ask Taylor to talk a little bit about the work in the counseling departments around learner profiles.
Good evening. I'm Taylor Johnson, I am one of the licensed school counselors at Edina High School. I'm also a 2004 graduate, and first-year member of the French immersion cohort. So bonjour tout le monde. Talking today, tonight, I'm going to talk about four components of the school counseling program. Within that, we've really tried to shift from being reactive to proactive, and within that mind, we wanted to encourage flexibility, how students learn, when and where they learn, helping students become more empowered, having choice, partnering with the community, with parents and guardians, as well as setting expectations and encouraging students to reach their goals. So the four components I'm going to talk about are on the slide behind me, the first of which is the college and career readiness curriculum. We've been able to take advantage of new components at the high school, including advisory and flex block. What's neat is that in our advisory program, students are actually able to hear their college and career readiness curriculum from their actual counselors. And on top of that, we connect distance learning, such as screencasts, PowerPoints, and assessment tools with that, so students can learn how they learn best. Student can also relearn, they can get reteaching from us. Our flex blocks, we've been able to partner with our community, with Edina Rotary, where we now have two additional students who are looking at exchange programs, partnering with local institutions, such as Normandale, and U of M, to provide PSEO opportunities, academic advising, work for NCAA athletes, and also a large summer opportunities fair, to make sure students are aware what is out there for them. When talking about kind of working with the community, our parent nights have been very successful, and we believe to truly support students in reaching their goals, we have to partner. And to give you an example, we typically have around 350 to 400 parents who will show up to our evening events, and we're trying to get more feedback from them, how we can move forward to help support their learners in reaching their goals. Two specific tools that I'm going to talk about tonight are MYAP, which stands for the Multi-Year Academic Planner. So if I say MYAP, and I will repeatedly, the Multi-Year Academic Planner, as well as Naviance. So if you look at the next slide, we'll see that every student has access to a learner profile, or a portfolio. And what this does is, it shows the college and career readiness curriculum for all students. So you'll see, as an 11th grader here, for example, we see students being able to access information on creating a four-year plan, on goal-setting, everything from building potentially a college list, to learning more about your career interests.
Can you just say where that's at, briefly? Where do kids find that?
Absolutely. So when a student logs on to Naviance, through their student portal, they will have three different opportunities. On the top, there's a Colleges, Careers, and About Me tab. Under the About Me tab, it should say Portfolio. And the portfolio links everything a student has had access to, and gone through to this point with the counseling department.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. So, we understand that everybody is in their own path. Not every student is ready to talk about what happens after high school, let alone what's happening next year, when it comes to registration. So we give students an opportunity to enrich themselves, but then also to take time to take an activity at the pace that's appropriate for them, as well as working with us on a one-to-one basis. The next slide is going to show you another aspect of the learner profile, and this is where we see students becoming more empowered with their choices, and learning more about themselves. Every student has strengths here. The items such as the Strengths Explorer, and the Do What You Are Assessment, help identify how they best learn, what their strengths are, how they best work in general, and it helps connect them to resources which they can enrich themselves, and find different pathways to different careers, different college majors, different career clusters that might fit them best. And they have access to do this on their own, as well as getting the support from us in the counseling department. So one thing that we see is, over time, students becoming more and more empowered in their learning. Many students come to us, and they don't know how to start a conversation with a teacher. I'm struggling in this class. And we can use assessments like this to help them identify, you are really good at this, this is a strength of yours, as well as, this is actually an area where we could see you grow even more at. And using this information that they can get on their own, empowers them to make those choices. The third slide is just an example of how we create individualized surveys for students. So in this case, the student chose a four-year college as their future plan, and we identified different beginning questions to ask them. This helps us twofold. One, it helps the student begin to think about this process of, what does that college fit look like for them? Two, it gives us information that we can grab at any point in time, so that we can have more in-depth conversations with them. So Naviance is a very strong and powerful tool that we've been using for several years now, and if we go to the next slide, we can kind of just see how this could progress in students. So from advisory, to small group meetings, to enrichment opportunities, to revisiting them, and giving them opportunities to work with us towards academic advising. So we really try to loop it all together, for them to know who they are as a learner, for them to understand the opportunities that are ahead, and to feel empowered to make those choices while partnering with the community at large. MYAP, this is probably the newest feature that we rolled out in the counseling department, and this is related to academic planning. Academic advising, for a very long time, has been at my desk, and we wanted to move that, so it could be at your kitchen table, so it could be in the living room, it could be with the Latin tutor you connected with, the math teacher that you love, the administrator you built rapport with. So with MYAP, students are able, starting in 8th grade, to create and modify a four-year academic plan, that keeps them to high school graduation. What's great is, you don't need to know what the prereqs are, it is programmed into MYAP. It guides you through the process, it allows you to continually update and change your plan. As a parent, you could log in and view the four-year plan. You can access it over the summer to update it. It's not just a one-time thing, it's something, it's fluid and living. It also, just in general, brings stakeholders together, better communication, more transparency on what goals are. I think we all know that the more a student understands a goal, the more likely they are to meet that goal, and exceed that goal. We see this as a platform that we can build on. Right now, it's a high school graduation path, there's no reason we can't look at it being a French immersion pathway, a fine arts pathway, a four-year college pathway, two-year college pathway. The options are limitless, and students could use this to identify customized paths that could fit them. And then, our last, my last slide, or second to last slide, actually, just gives you a visual of this, the multi-year academic planner. It formats their plan in a visual manner, so that students and parents can easily interpret it. In the past, we've done this paper and pencil, every year with a student. But we all know that not everything that goes into a backpack makes its way out. This way, students and families can ensure that that four-year plan is always accessible, and always viewable, and we can continue that conversation at an early stage.
Did all of our, let's see, so incoming 9, 10, 11, 12 graders have to do and complete this plan this year?
So, all current 8th, 9th, and 10th grade students did a multi-year academic or four-year plan. 11th graders still have paper, pencil, review with their counselor.
Really?
Yep. Because the multi, essentially what it comes down to is, we, when we transferred from Ties to Infinite Campus, our course numbers changed, and the way that MYAP interprets course plan is through course numbering. So for current 11th graders, they have two systems in their transcripts. So moving forward, all students have that opportunity.
Okay. But currently, yeah, thank you.
And the impact we see, and I think this is just great stats to see, to see how the community, and how the students and learners are excelling. This year, we've had over 250 colleges that came to visit with our students, so their admissions reps, the people that are on the application decision committees. We've had, we see an average of 140 students in the counseling office each day, with upwards of 433. We have, as of last month, 87% of the senior class has had applications to two-to-four-year colleges. Total applications we process is near 4,000, and counselors meet with all students, either in small groups or individually, as well as, in addition, in the college and career readiness advisory curriculum. So advisory, they meet us all in large setting, but in addition to that, they meet us either in small groups, and/or in individual meetings. So, in quick summary, we're trying to empower students to understand their strengths, to understand where their growth is, and we're trying to give them more pathways to choose what is best for them moving forward, and we're doing that with flexibility in how they learn best, and where they learn best, and creating more communication with the community, and with our colleagues as well. Yeah?
I mean, a lot of this is wonderful, so thank you for presenting it and putting it together. I guess a question I have is, especially with the learner profile, and having students explore their strengths, how do you balance that with knowing that these are high school students, and they're going to evolve, and they might feel something's a strength one day, and be interested in it one day, and then, the next day it could be something else? How do you work with students or position it such that these are strengths, that maybe in a year or two, you might have a whole different set of strengths? And work with students to realize that, since they are still kids growing? And my second question is, do you ever feel that having kids look this deep into trying to understand themselves creates a layer of anxiety and stress for them? Just give, at my whole high school experience, I never worried about that, and went and ate at McDonald's. So how do you, how do you balance those two things?
Well, when I meet with a student, I tell them, my job is to keep as many doors open for them as possible, that there are so many more opportunities than even I had, going to graduating high school, from gap year to two-year schools, four-year schools, military, trade schools, to joining the workforce right away. I'm not going to tell them what's best, I'm going to try to hold all doors open for them to choose what's best for them. I think that we encourage students to grow, and to change their minds. I often tell a student that, okay, this is what your career interest inventory has, or this is what your personality assessment is. You have an idea of where you want to go to school, or what you want to be. I think this is amazing, let me support you in this, let me give you opportunities to dabble in it. But if you change your mind, I'm very proud of you for changing your mind, because this is growth. And sometimes growth is change, and sometimes change is scary, but that it's natural. I think part of what our students deal with these days is this open life script, there isn't just one path, and that can be really intimidating. I think we collaborate and team with a lot of our teachers, as far as working with students to keep your expectations realistic, while also striving for more. It really is, it's a building effort to help these students realize how amazing they are, and to realize how amazing their opportunities are, and that they can achieve it. and to realize how amazing their opportunities are and that they can achieve it.
I had one.
Just really quickly, there are competing ideas. Should you be trying a lot of things, which is a very healthy mindset for kids, you know, especially as they're entering high school? Should we be trying to further develop your strengths? Which strikes me as sort of the second tier. You don't want to say, "Well, we've tried a lot of things. One of them really wasn't for you, so that's where you're going to focus your time." Which is sort of that last tier of, "Well, we'll develop some weaknesses." And that's maybe especially once you've got a direction you want to go, where is it that might be a barrier to entry and develop the weakness to make that more accessible? But, in the first place, you know, it's very important, I think, to sort of have a "What if we tried and what if you think of it?" type approach. So, I'm very grateful for the documentation that goes into this. So, we're not trying to hold it in our memory banks as much anymore. I remember my own experience, it was very difficult. If you have an idea or two of where you're going, it's very difficult to answer some of these other questions generally. You kind of picture what it might look like when you're answering a question about your interests or what your future might look like. And so, this sort of documentation layered upon, you know, years of discussion and analysis really seems to be just an invaluable tool for our students.
I just wanted to follow up. So, the two tools that you're talking about, My App, which I think is great. I know we talked about it at Teaching and Learning and went through the process with my current 10th grader. And even as a school board member, I had to go, "Oh, yeah, that's right. We can't just say what we want next year. We have to complete the whole plan." So, I think that's fabulous. The one question I have, though, since Naviance is such an important tool, and I know that over the last couple of years, we've really been pushing to make sure we're using that across the board. Are you guys monitoring to make sure that students have taken the steps to actually go in and use the tool? Are we tracking and making sure?
Yep, we do have access to run reports, and we do frequently. And we set goals for typically around 70% participation in these areas. And we use Flex Block as a time to meet with students who haven't. Individual meetings, we have junior meetings coming up, and that's a key touch point, too, where we ask students to truly use these tools. They're here for a reason. And I'd say, overall, we do pretty well with that. But, not all students will choose to participate in everything, at least at that time. So, students typically, we see in 10th grade, we do this personality assessment, but it might not be till 11th grade that they truly buy into it. So, typically, over time, we see high rates of use, but typically, our gauge is around 70%.
Okay. And so, do we have a goal of wanting 100% participation? Or is, you know, is that not an end goal for the district?
Well, I think for the Counseling Department, we hope that all students take advantage of it, and we give our efforts to do that. I think we see that other students will use other tools beyond Naviance as well, such as Google. They might choose more than Naviance at times, but...
I think if I could comment on one of the things that Taylor talked about at the beginning was how the Counseling Department has really shifted to bring their work to students. That's been a goal of theirs, instead of just waiting for the students to come. That might have been the old model. And even with Naviance as a tool, without the structures in place to be able to see students during advisory or seeing them at Flex Block, you did just have that segment of students that were home talking to their parents about it and working on Naviance because they were self-motivated. So, now, we're jump-starting that, I think, with a broader section of our whole student population.
That was, uh, these numbers are impressive. So, you guys are handling a lot of volume with supporting kids. You really are. So, thanks for all you're doing. In terms of the process from tracking being a very passive process to actively engaging and intervening when you see something start to slide off from a path that you see a student on, being a very active process, where are we in that path right now, just at a high level?
Yeah, I think, so I'm Leanne Tool. I am a school psychologist at the high school. And this year, I'm serving in a role more of an intervention coordinator, just as we start to roll out all these different policies and our... Yeah, well, and our schedule changes and things. So, I can't really tell if this is working very well. So, I, you know, you're talking about a student who maybe we know is on a path, and we start to see them slip. We have in place our student support teams. And so, each, it's broken down by alpha. So, we have our, both of our, we have two counselors per team and then admin for that team. And myself, a school psychologist, and the social workers that support that part of the alphabet as well. And so, we meet bi-weekly and talk about students. Maybe a concern has come up through the counselor. I have a teacher form that teachers can fill out if they have a concern about a student. We do run, you know, data based on like the D and F lists, and then I dig into those and look at who are students right now who have Ds and Fs and, you know, who do we need to talk about and look at for further support? So, we do have some mechanisms in place to catch those students who we do see start to fall. And then, through our student support teams, we do build kind of, "Okay, what are our next steps with supporting these students?"
So, as you do this each year, you're refining your triggers. So, for instance, when a student hits their first D, a warning goes out to the teacher, but you don't want to pull the student every time they get a bad grade out of the job, right? So, is that a refining process we're still going through?
Yes, I would say it is. Yeah, we're refining as we go. And it's even changed from first semester to second semester as we understood better what are some better trigger points, so, yeah.
I've got a question. First off, I think it's just a great idea to raise consciousness and create more intentionality in the parts of the students to think about what their next steps are, not that they just graduate and "What am I going to do? I'm just going to college passively," that they think through this. So, anecdotally, it resonates with me. Is there, are there any metrics surrounding the success of these learner profiles? Have other school districts had before and afters? Is there any way to track how students are doing after they leave high school? Their college graduation rates? How are they doing in the military? Correctional records? Is there any kind of success that we can track coming that we can put some numbers onto with the learner profiles?
Do you have, do you have long-term data?
Well, I think some things that are available actually through MDE is the SLEDs data, that you can look at how students do longitudinally after their four years. We have such a high graduation rate at the high school already, so it's not like we're looking at six- or eight-year plans in terms of high school graduation. But, in terms of some data that's out there about employment, college graduation, I think some of that data has been collected, starting to be collected from MDE, if you look at that SLEDs data. Yep. Yeah, so that would be, if you go actually into the report card in MDE, the acronym, what does it stand for, somebody? But, uh... Thank you. Yeah, so it's longitudinal data, thank you, around, students around the state of Minnesota. So, Leanne, do you want to talk a little bit about our next piece?
Yeah, so, again, Leanne Tool. Just wanting to build on some of the things that Taylor has talked about and Andy has mentioned so far. I think one of the strengths that we have going right now at the high school is that we've got some great structures and policies in place that are enabling our movement towards more personalized work. So, as Taylor mentioned, we're reaching more students through the career and counseling curriculum, through our Flex Block, through advisory. So, we've got some of these different things in place, given our new schedule, where we can reach more students. Also, you see a picture here of our flexible learning spaces. We know that the school was really redone to provide a lot of flexible learning spaces for our students. And as part of our schedule change as well, we have a student prep hour. All students are encouraged to take six classes and have a seventh student prep hour so that they have time to complete their work and choose where they need to go to help complete or help get that work completed. Students can go to a collaborative space. If they need to be working with other students, students can choose to go to a quiet space if they need to be working in a quiet space. And students can also choose to go and access our tutor supports, which you'll hear more about here from our peer coaches, as well as Kristin and Alex, as part of, you know, a way to help support their learning through their choice. As I mentioned, Flex Block is a time for not only the counselors to connect with students, but for teachers as well, to pull in those students who need some extra support. And students also have the choice to be able to say, "I need to go work on my physics. I'm going to choose to go see my physics teacher during Flex Block." So, there is that element of choice, but also that element of support and intervention as well for students who are needing that extra boost. And then, a few times, it's been mentioned, our advisory curriculum and just having that advisory piece. Not only does that help the student have access to the counseling curriculum for the career paths, but also just kind of a different relationship with the teacher who they maybe wouldn't have had. I, for example, have an advisory, and I think it's so great because it's a group of students I don't necessarily get to see in my typical job role. And it's just, it's fun to celebrate their different, you know, strengths and things in a role that I'm not usually in. So, it's a nice connection point for students and for staff.
Do you know what percent of our students are using a student prep hour this year in the, through nine, 12?
For this year, we encouraged all current ninth and 10th graders as their first year in the high school to take a student prep. I would say that, kind of to Andy's point, I think we're around that 75 to 80% mark for students utilizing the student prep. Side note, we're doing incoming ninth-grade family registrations that are new to the district. And a lot of them are hearing from peers and upperclassmen how beneficial those student preps are, which I was pretty excited to hear about.
Thank you.
The one mic, pass the mic. All right. The one thing I just want to point out that's different, the student prep idea, I think for the public to be aware is, you know, in a traditional study, you know, you, sort of the sit in rows and the quiet study, we're trying to create different pathways and personalized pathways about how students use their time during the school day, which could vary daily. So, today, I want to work collaboratively with my team on some calculus videos. Tomorrow, I'm behind in my reading in English, so I'm going to sit in a quiet space to get that done. The next day, I've got a test coming up in calculus again, but I have some questions and I can go to a tutorial space. So, that's that personalization we're looking at and having students make those kind of choices. So, I'm going to let Alex and Kristin talk a little bit about their work in SMATH and Writing Center.
So, a couple of years ago, I was teaching BC Calculus, and then I was also teaching Advanced Algebra Prep. So, I had the highs and the lows during my day. And in the middle of the night, one night, I thought, "Why can't I get these kids together so my BC Calculus students can help hold open the door for math for the lower-end students that I see during the day?" And I went through and kind of talked to Kristin about the writing block at that time and how to create something like that for math. And it was, when it first started, it was the Math Hive, and we met. We had some tutors, and it, like, the structure in place right now for SMATH means that kids can get help on their math any hour of the day because it's during all of the periods of student prep. And I also think that it really benefits my tutors to be helping students with math. When I taught BC Calculus, some of the most commonly missed questions were solving quadratic equations because they did all the calculus right, and then they got to the part with the algebra and they floundered. So, it's a chance for them to review their algebra as well. And so, it's personalized for the tutor as well as the kid getting help. These pictures that are up on the screen right now are pictures that I took one day when I thought, "My dream is coming true." There's a BC Calculus student helping another student with her, with his math. And then, a group of students working together. And those, those kids have a special place in my heart because they were in my, in SMATH with me every day, and they came every day. And that kid in the blue sweatshirt, Mo, secretly got to be on his final exam. And I think it was, a big part of it was that he was in SMATH every day. And sometimes, it didn't look productive, but overall, the fact that he came there and got help every day really paid off. We have some usage data. This is second semester data for the science and math. And I'm a math teacher, and I'm kind of glad that it's called SMATH and not Ma-science or something. But, it is also a science tutoring center. And this is, actually visits for any subject area, so also including the writers' block. Students come in to the tutoring center during their student prep, and they sign in at the desk. And so, this is their, like, where we take attendance, but also where we ask them, "What are you here for?" And so, we had second semester so far. We've had 331 student visits, and that's just in January and February. And those are 125 unique visitors. So, there might be some people like my friend, Mo, who come every day, but the others are unique visitors. The vast majority are underclassmen, but we have had some seniors come. So, it's exciting.
Hello, my name is Kristin Benson. I am an English teacher and the facilitator for the Writing Center. And I want to turn it over to a couple of our student coaches to let them tell you more about what we do. But, another piece, in addition to what Alex talked about, is students coming to see us. And I love with this new structure that we have with this student prep that we are available in an equitable fashion seven periods of the day. So, it's not just, "Come see us during lunch when kids want to be eating lunch," or, you know, "Come in early." So, we're accessible. We have a lot of students that come and drop in, but another exciting piece of what we're doing to help customize those learning paths and really offer more systemic support is that we are renting out our coaches. So, there's a coach reservation system. So, if you look at this spreadsheet we have set up, this is shared, this one that you're looking at is a sample from a specific week where teachers will log into that spreadsheet and say, "This is the day when we're working on the Of Mice and Men or To Kill a Mockingbird or the Passion Project Day. I've got a writer's workshop going on. I've got 25 to 35 students in this class." As a teacher, I want to get to every single one of them, but I know that that's not physically possible. So, the teachers will say, "Send me two to five writing coaches." And so, the writing coaches will be used as the teachers see fit, either sitting outside in the flexible learning spaces or walking through the classes and really able to personalize, ask questions, and really give them that student-centered sort of learning. And we found, too, that a lot of times with that instruction coming from student to student, sometimes that level of just intimidation or the ability to ask the question of another student who's, "Hey, I've been there. I've done this paper. I know some of the stumbling blocks." It's really been positive. And so, in the first semester with this new model, we had over 422 conferences in the Writing Center. And about a quarter of those, a little more than a quarter of those came from the pushouts into the classroom. And we just see this model sort of taking off and really meeting more of the needs of the students. I wanted to turn it over just for a moment to Kayla and Anna to talk to you a little bit more about how they see productive writing conferences working, how they're helping to move kids more towards proficiency, and then also some of the enrichment, I think, that they get from being a student who has to not only be a writer, but know how to talk to people about writing. And so, I think they gain something from that as well, so...
Okay. So, a lot of what we've talked about is about, like, personalized learning and how, specifically how the Writing Center in particular can enhance that. And so, I've really found that as a Writing Center coach, like, every student that comes in, it's never the same conference. Like, there's not, we got a basic, like, tip sheet at the beginning of the year, like, "You can try these things to, like, help the, help..." Wherever they are, you can follow these guidelines, and hopefully, you'll get them to somewhere productive where they feel like they've got something out of the conference. But, you can't necessarily just, like, check things off a list. You really have to kind of figure out how to work with the kids because some kids have come in and they are looking for enrichment. They are meeting standards, but they would like to take their writing to the next level. They have their ideas down on the paper. They have their evidence in, like, a thematic novel or in a thematic essay. But, they would like to figure out how to really, like, get their reasoning to the next level or get their thesis to the next level to where it really ties in to the essay. So, what we can do then, as Writing Center coaches who have oftentimes written the very same essays that those kids have before them and have thought about the same ideas, we can help them see what ideas they're thinking of and kind of ask guiding questions to help them understand what their ideas are a little bit better themselves. So, we can really enrich them in that sense. But, we can also, if kids are struggling, we can also help them bump that up a level. I have had, like, within the same week, I have had kids in the same class come in and ask me, like, very deep questions about their writing, but also have kids come in and ask for clarif, uh, excuse me, clarification on what a thesis is. So, that's just, there's a very different level, and the teacher might not always see that. And classes kind of will keep going whether the individual students are really following or not. So, what we can do is those kids or the teachers can decide with kind of requesting Writing Center coaches, they can send out individual students that they think need help, is we can help them get up to a level where they really feel... where they really feel like they have a handle on the writing assignment. They're understanding the concepts that the teacher has told them and how to work on their writing. And so then we can really help enhance the learning experience of people at all different levels of their writing. And then I think we talked about, yes.
Hi, I'm Anna. And Kayla mostly covered basically everything that is beneficial about the Writing Center. But one thing I just wanted to touch on was both in the classroom pushouts and when students visit the Writing Center, I've definitely received feedback from the students and the teachers on how beneficial it can be just for students to have another set of eyes on their paper or another student. So maybe someone that's a little more approachable than, like maybe their teacher, just to talk through their paper with. And as a writing coach, I've basically read most of the books or done most of the assignments that they're working on. So I feel like I have a pretty basic grasp on it going into it. So I feel like I can definitely help them talk through their ideas. But at the beginning of the year, we sort of like during our writing coach training, one thing that was emphasized was how we're not there to just tell them quick answers on how to improve their writing and get a good grade on the project. But we really want to try to ask them questions that will help stretch them as writers and in the long term, improve their writing proficiency and their ability to succeed in their courses. So like Kayla said, every conference is individual and different. But I think that having those personal one-on-one tutoring conferences, either in a classroom or in the Writing Center can definitely benefit the students as we try to ask them questions that challenge sort of what they've, their, what the ideas they've already come up with are and help push their writing to the next level and build writing skills that can help them in the long term rather than just on that specific paper.
Well, before I move on to this next segment here, I just want to say thank you to our tutors, our coaches, the coordinators of SMATH and the Writing Center. It's one of the things that I said I wanted to make sure that I did is take advantage of the incredible talent of our students at our school that also care a lot about Edina High School and want to do service. So it's a great combination of great teacher leadership and also student leadership. So kudos. And one of the things we did do, yeah, absolutely. You know, and this whole piece continues to evolve. So if you've been to the high school lately, where we had SMATH and the Writing Center was a little bit in kind of the dungeon, a little bit of the bowels of the high school. And they were perfectly nice spaces, but just not necessarily immediately accessible. So we're trying to create the Commons and the Career Center and Student Services and the Writing Center and SMATH is like a central hub. And so I think we've seen that, just that visual line too, of students that come from the Commons, they're in a collaborative student prep. But now I don't understand how to do this math problem. I can go over and access a tutor right away. Those little things I think make a difference. Hopefully we'll see that in the volume of students that access those, those programs. The next piece I want to talk about here is about, you know, my work and management's work around personalized learning. How do we set the stage? You've done that and the community's done that in terms of facilities and spaces. The core planning team and has created a schedule, I think that allows a lot more flexibility with that. But my work is really around relationships and roles. And that's a piece in terms of my community connections. One of the things we're working with the College and Career Center is how do we get a database of all the talents and career fields of the people in the community that want to volunteer and come in. So a flex block, we can have a speaker series of people that have their MBAs or a speaker series of people that are involved in the medical industry that students are interested in tying that to their career pathway. Family engagement, I think on multiple levels, I think is a, a goal in terms of me getting people into the building and also being intentional about people that we get into the building that maybe wouldn't necessarily just access on traditional time slots that we have like counseling. And then obviously coaching work, you know, as much as we look at the financial constraints of that, I'd love to see over time if we could build upon some of the coaching work that we've done at the high school amongst teacher talent and build instructional coaches around PL to help this embed more of this into the classroom like they've done at the middle school. So I'd say the high school is down the path. We kind of have a different role in terms of a structure, I think. But now we need to move some of that into the classroom about what that looks like in terms of instruction. Some of it's there. But in many ways, I think we could support that more around how we do culturally responsive teaching, personalized learning, interventions that are classroom-based, enrichments that are classroom-based, that I think we can build upon that. So we're down the road and I'm pretty excited about some of that work. One piece I guess I want to talk about in terms of connections too, is some pieces that we built this year. And I found out this fall about how our students want to have a voice. We have a new student senate this year that we created as an advocacy group and also gives me an opportunity to talk with students about new ideas. I just had a long meeting with student senate about safety to get their perspective, their concerns, but just run ideas by them as well. So I think this all comes into how students feel connected and feel that that school meets their needs. All right, Leanne, we're going to talk about this one, about teacher work. You want me to go? All right. So another phase is, you know, we are very strong at the high school around PLCs, professional learning communities, which meet, these are really teacher-driven teams typically by courses. So Alex would meet with other Algebra II teachers, Kristin might meet with other APOL teachers to try to define kind of those key questions about what students will learn. How do we do assessment to find out what they're learning? How do we intervene when we need to? So some of the things that come out of personalized learning are not new to us. So these concepts you see from the Institute from personalized learning around voice and choice, about relevancy and application, about assessment practices, about culturally responsive teaching practices. This is right within our wheelhouse of that work that we're already doing with PLCs. So that's why I brought up at the beginning that PL is not some far-fetched idea that takes away from really the work that we're already doing. So it's really an add. So if I'm going to look at this idea that we were talking about recently as a leadership team, this idea of how you change a classroom or not, not everything in a classroom, but parts of a classroom that go from this model of LED, which is teacher-directed, to something that is shared, that students do collectively, to something that is owned, when you think about a capstone project, right, that's owned by that student. So not everything, it doesn't mean everything goes to owned, that the students are just on their own. But I think that if the mindset is there amongst our teachers to think about some things need to be led clearly, right? And other things, kids can really bring that together and other things they can take off. And you want to give those opportunities for students to take off with an area of passion and a depth of study. If you want to add to that, Leanne, anything?
I just, I had a really great meeting with, I just wanted to give a shout out kind of to our biology PLC. I just was, they have such great practices in place for their assessment practices. They have aligned really all of their assessments and they give students at the beginning of a unit all of the, the standards that they need the students to meet for that, that, that section. And as they learn them, the students can go through and check off that they've learned those. And then the tests are directly related to the standards. Then the students, when they're given the test, go through and go back and do a test, kind of where did they get it wrong? What standard did I miss and where do I need more work? And that really can kind of guide their flex blocks then and the choosing where they can give more support to students who need it. So I just, I was very impressed when I met with that PLC and I wanted to kind of highlight that it's kind of all these things working together. So.
Commenting a bit on the, the idea of going deeper, but still having that be weighty for the grade, you know, and counting as a summative. Somebody's summative being perhaps even more difficult than somebody else's summative. So we're not just grading everybody based off of the same state standards. Which my criticism of them have always been that it's not, they're not that difficult. They're not that aspirational. They're not that impressive. And for a board that says, well, we're not, we're going to cringe a little bit when we hurt ourselves compared to metro average or statewide averages. And yet we, we aspire to the state minimums. You know, there's just, there's a disconnect there in my mind. And so to the extent that we give opportunities to go deeper, and we had this question earlier too, what about backing it up with an expectation that we go deeper? A huge part of your grade is going to be based off of how you, how well you learn while attempting to go deeper. Because I see that the first day of the unit, you, you were at the state minimum. So the next two weeks, I expect a lot out of you. You're not just waiting for the wimpy summative.
Well, I can try to address that question also. Maybe some students can address that question too, because I don't see any of the students sitting here thinking about doing the minimum. And I would say that the vast majority of our students at Edina High School are not the type of, have the type of culture that's about doing the minimum. We have a really, a culture of excellence and kids want to excel. And there's that peer culture around excellence at the high school. I think when I see students in a student prep, what they're doing is, is studying, trying to get ahead, trying to make sure that they understand something, trying to get help, trying to self-advocate and so on. So I think that when we talk about students meeting standards, we want a hundred percent of our students to meet the standard. We don't want students below standard, but that doesn't mean that we're not looking for students to go farther and exceed and to have those opportunities to go further. And I would say that in terms of the expectations that our teachers have in classrooms would be at a very high level, at that exceeds level to be able to get kids to that next step to be successful. So I don't know if any of the students or the teachers want to address that question either.
One of the things I'll just add is that in the PLC framework, there's a specific question that, that addresses this concept. And that's part of the work is what do you do when students are already, already either know the content and have the skills, et cetera? What do you do with those students? So part of the strategic planning of every PLC is to start roadmapping. What do we do with students when they've already learned the content, when they already have those skills? What is next for them? What can we do with them next? So again, that's, that's built into the structure, but that's part of their ongoing continuous improvement. I'm going to ask the students to kind of speak to, maybe just reiterate, what kind of experiences you see when students have met the standard? And what kinds of things, how do you push them above that? What do they, what do they do next?
Okay. So I, so this year, as, as a senior, I am taking four academic classes, but they're all APs. So I feel like that, just in choosing of classes, you can choose what level of activity or what of difficulty you would like. But then within those classes, I feel like there's the opportunity not to be only meeting the standards, but to be learning beyond it. So I'm taking AP French. And so what goes in the grade book are specific assessments. And it's, so one of the things that we have are vocabulary tests. And the vocabulary is twenty words. And the first, I think, seven are vocabulary words that the teacher, that you choose from the ones that the teacher has assigned, that she has decided are very important. But the other ones are vocabulary words that you have picked up as the unit has progressed. That if you do, if you read an article in French or if you watch a video in French, are words that you pick up in class and you, as the unit progresses, you write those down and you learn them. And then you choose to put them on the test. So you can kind of self-select a little bit of difficulty there and you can really choose to learn those words. Like it's very easy to kind of fib a word if you want to, like, oh, no, I didn't know that word before and it's on the, it's on the quiz now. But I personally, and I know many other students, try to avoid that so that we're actually progressing our learning versus just remaining stagnant.
So similarly to what Kayla said, I think one big factor in, for me personally, trying to continue academically challenging myself would be through the selection of courses. So this year as a junior, participating in multiple AP and enriched courses has definitely been challenging as I feel like the standards and the pace of those courses are faster. But I feel like across all of my courses, I think that my teachers do a really good job of monitoring how myself and other students are progressing in the course. And I feel like if they see a student that is really excelling in the learning and the standards seem to click easily for them, I feel like there's definitely extra resources available for deeper learning. So one example of this is I'm in AP US Literature and Language this year, which is an AP English class. And for all of our essays, they've definitely, as a writer, they've definitely challenged me to think more deeply and analyze the text more deeply. But a lot of the work kind of behind the scenes, so formative work that goes into that, students, you can definitely meet the standards by doing things like analyzing certain texts through a variety of lenses. But you can also, I feel like there's ample opportunity to go beyond the standards and challenge yourself through just like commitment to doing the work and really challenging your own thinking. So I feel like the courses that I'm enrolled in and the teachers that I'm enrolled in offer sort of somewhat self-directed opportunity for challenges, but also they'll provide more challenging opportunities if you would like. So.
I have a question, if I may. I was camping with the scouts this weekend and they know I'm the board. And I told them that I'm going to be hearing about personalized learning today. And so I brought that up and I said, what do you guys think about this? And by and large, they're a self-starting crew. And one concern that they expressed was for some of their classmates who aren't particularly mature, who aren't particularly self-driven, their concern is that these classmates will kind of slack. And personalized learning sounds great for self-starters. What about the kids who don't have an adult vision for themselves? Who don't see why it's necessary to study hard, to think creatively? They're just bored. They don't really sense an interest in why this material is important for them. How do we inspire or guide, direct, encourage the kids who may be less than motivated? I certainly remember that from my high school. And my high school experimented with modular scheduling. It worked well for the self-starters. It worked well for me. But there's a whole set of kids that it didn't work well for. So I'm just kind of curious, what should do, first, do you think a population like that exists at EHS? And if it does, how do we engage them?
Well, yes, EHS has some students that sometimes need more motivation. My kid needs more motivation at times at home to take care of things. And, and I think this kind of goes down to that model of that led, shared and owned. It's not always owned and on your own and it's not always led, directed by the teacher. It's not always shared. So depending on the assignment and the kid and the instruction or what the data is telling you about how kids are doing, that can change your instruction. You know, I think that these teachers would probably make adjustments section to section. My first hour is different than my third hour in terms of how I approach it. We have some teachers that probably would say, yeah, my first hour, I, I'm splitting my class all the time, letting them use the extended learning area. I'm conferencing with students in smaller groups. My, my second hour, no way are they leaving the classroom. They're going to be here with me the whole time. So those adjustments are made based on individuals and the culture of the class. Now, the other thing we've done too, is you look at student prep, for example, something that we built. And we call it student prep intentionally because we're building that similar to how we view like a teacher prep. So when a teacher has a period off, we don't necessarily tell them exactly what to do. They might grade papers the entire prep time just by themselves. They might be collaborating with a colleague and doing some planning. But they also just might be getting a cup of coffee and just taking a break for a few minutes before they get back into their work. So we're viewing that same way for our students. However, Leanne would tell you something that we built around student prep is that we have multiple levels of student prep. The traditional student prep, that students have that choice. But when we collect data and have some students that are struggling in that, we've actually pulled them into something that we call Prep Plus. That's with a counselor to diagnose what the issue is academically for those students. And it's meant to have on and off ramp opportunities, so it's not permanent. You might be in for two weeks and we figure out what the issue is to try to get you right on the back, on the path, the correct path, and then you're off. Again, we also have a third layer for those students that really need more intensive support called directed study, which is a small group directed check and connect on a daily basis. So even within the structure that we have that's personalized and flexible, it doesn't mean that we're not being intentional about trying to get kids what they need. It's the same with Flex Block. We have office hours for students to come in and get help if they have the motivation and initiative. But Flex Block can also be directed. So Alex might have a group of students that need help in Algebra II. She's not asking them to come in, she's telling them to come in and assigning them. That's the word that we're using. We're assigning you to come in because you need help with Algebra II. That doesn't prevent the self-motivated student from getting the help that they need. But with those students that are not necessarily doing those things by their own volition, we have to take that responsibility to get after those students, to get them connected, to stay up to speed, to be successful in the class. So it's a combination. That's why I keep saying it's an and. It's not a. It's not a one or the other. To be personalized doesn't mean that we are not being directed and directive at times to those students that need it. It's a combination, because ultimately, we're looking for all of our students to reach their potential, and that can mean a different approach depending on the kid. I don't know if that answers your question.
And it might make a different timeline for different kids, because, you know, from a growth mindset perspective, some students need to develop and build those skills around their own time management, around how they manage their course load, et cetera. And we believe that kids can develop that. So it's putting them into a structure where if they don't have that skill set right now, we have safety nets for them. But as they move through school, we want them to develop that engagement at a higher level, so they become more and more empowered as learners.
So I'm just wondering, how long have we been using personalized learning skills like the ones you've mentioned at the high school, and how pervasive are they? Are they all courses or?
Like I said, it depends on how you look. It's, and maybe from, we've seen elementary and middle looking like inside-out, I think at the high school and coming in new this year, it's in many ways sort of outside-in, that we're looking at how we've created spaces, schedule, structures, infrastructure, support systems to be able to do some of this work. And I think our next step is how does this look in a classroom base? You know, what does this look like in terms of the mindset of our teachers? And some of our teachers do it naturally, others need more professional development about what this looks like on a classroom-based level. Or how are teams, like LeAnn talked about, our biology team, very, being very far along and advanced, and how do they share that information with another team that is not as far along? Or they haven't been together long enough to establish kind of that rapport to be able to be really aligned. So I'd say for the high school, it's interesting, we'd say who's the furthest along. I'd say that there's some things in place at the middle school level from instructional strategies and so on that's further along than a high school. But I like some of the work that we're doing and seeing that structure and systems that we put in place to be able to have those touchpoints with many different kinds of students.
So, for example, in the biology classes, how is the district evaluating whether this teaching methodology is as effective as a traditional and that all students are growing?
So I can just say you're going to look at both. You're going to look at quantitative data, and then you got to look at qualitative data. So in the end, how are students doing in terms of graduation rates, ACT scores, graduation from college, that longitudinal data about how students are doing, their success? But then you got to ask them, you know, does your school also provide a sense of connection and joy? Do you like being there? Do you feel like you're engaged, challenged, connected to your school, whoever you are? Are you getting the appropriate supports, that safety net to be able to help you be successful? Everybody feels like they can meet their potential. So I think it's a combination of that kind of data that we probably need to, that we need to connect, collect to see. But again, it's not a, it's not a either-or. So I could ask both of these teachers that are veteran teachers, all these teachers here, and they are, have been successful in their work, okay? And they have maybe taught in some days, in some ways traditionally, but they continue to evolve as educators and that mindset about intervention or instruction or culturally responsive teaching or personalized learning. How does that end up getting us to where we need to go? And ultimately, that's what we're looking for, is high levels of achievement, high levels of engagement and excitement and connection with the school.
I have one last question. First of all, I appreciate all of you coming here and talking for so long and all the great work you're doing. I was wondering, as far as the tutoring, the reading and math tutoring, which is great, but do you collect data as to why students are coming in? Not just the grade level, but why students are coming in?
Yep. So on our current spreadsheet that we're using for second semester now, and so it was one of these evolving pieces, but we do have a column for, you know, what class are you here for and what, yeah, what subject are you seeking help with? And I just, I think we added that maybe after we pulled together this data, so, because we are always looking for what, what more can we, you know, know about students, right?
It's not more detailed than that. Yes.
Right. It's, we aren't asking specifically what, what area of mathematics is difficult for you, we're asking, who's your math teacher and what math class are you here for at this point?
Because it could be, it could over time be an interesting indicator of pockets of areas where students are struggling, or if at the beginning of the year, you see a lot of kids, maybe there's some transition issues that, just, a leading indicator to help inform. So that was all. Thank you.
One of the things we're hoping with the tutorial model is to change culture amongst our students, that it is acceptable and an excellent thing to do, to ask for help and to get help and to work together. So that mindset that if you are somehow needing help or needing to work with someone else, that that somehow means you're not a strong student, those are some things that we're trying to overcome amongst a very strong peer culture as well. So, and I think we're seeing some inroads in that area, because it's fun to go to math, hopefully. Fun to go to the writing center, you know? I mean, I think from the standpoint of connecting with other classmates, you know, upperclassmen, you know, and connecting with kids to be able to get a different way to have someone explain this writing assignment or this math assignment.
I had one last question. Are the writing coaches available to help board members?
We have a fee-based structure that we can establish.
This was excellent, guys, thanks for coming in.
I would just like to publicly thank Andy, Alex, Kristen, LeAnn, Taylor, and our coaches for all of their hard work and their just daily dedication to trying to improve the learner experience over at the high school. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
Next on the agenda is budget recommendations. We'll give a minute or so for those people who are leaving, and then Margot, you've got the floor.
Is the whole board leaving or just checking?
We could do that. All right, we're going to go into recess for five minutes, just to let people stretch. We shall be back.
Actually, I'm going to rest in about two weeks.
Actually, I'm going to rest in about two weeks.
Actually, I'm going to rest in about two weeks.
You have a little tricky moment, huh?
Yeah. I saw you at the presentation this morning. The two of you, the two of you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was like, I was going to have lunch.
I do, seriously.
The day I'm headed on the bus, and I was home.
Check.
You just go, your brain always goes.
Who's talking about my experience?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, like not even like, not my company, I just, it wasn't on our whiteboard, and I just, I just.
Amber did that in kindergarten, and she was having so much fun, she just didn't get off, she wanted to keep writing. I'm waiting at the station for the first person. And she's coming every bus, I mean, I knew I needed to go on the bus list to be a bus member. I mean, that's why I'm like, I, and I'm like, oh, just trying to say, you know, I'm sure I'm a bus driver.
She's wanting to go.
But there is that.
What if?
What if she didn't get off?
Good.
Good.
I know.
So you have to get tomorrow for state, you have to get tomorrow for state.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Have a fun guest speaker.
You have to do the thought of it.
I mean, she didn't see.
No.
I think you have to do something, I mean, late, late.
I have a big meeting here.
Why don't you say hello, that's not so hard.
Somebody's had to get there 20 minutes or more.
We're going to go through each one. Are we going to kind of highlight things?
No, 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 no.
Just say the details are in the packet?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. I'm just going to say, you know, when you look at the.
Can we call everybody back to the board table, please?
Are you going to start?
I don't get an hour?
Did you need to sit?
No, well, I was going to ask, can you ask Bobby maybe something about the door?
It's my stars.
Oh, yeah, I don't.
Honestly, it really gets a hard to see when people go in, and it like interrupts and beat them here.
The thing is.
I know, I'm not a gavel person.
Yeah, they can just.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We are back from our recess, and we are going to get into the budget. And we have Margot and Dr. Schultz.
Thank you, Chair Wallen Friedman, and members of the EDINA Board. We are going to run through the budget parameters for the 2018, 2019 budget, and also discuss the reductions that we're proposing to you. I just want to let the audience know that the board has had a work session on this last Thursday and have detail, there's detail within the report. So I'm going to turn it over to Margot to go through the budget, the parameters and some of the mid-year budget adjustments.
So just a quick reminder that we, as part of our plan, starting in January, did make some mid-year adjustments. I won't go through all of them today, but the one at the very bottom, the committed fund balance, reducing that from 2% to 1%, that is a later agenda item in policy for discussion, and then approval will be requested of that on April 9th, along with this budget plan as well. Two separate approvals, but they tie, they tie together. Let's see, our budget parameters, we did have the levy renewal in 2017. It was, there was an increase in the levy, but that was to go for additional costs for, that were added in 1718 for square footage and scheduling and programming. But it did not address the additional money to manage the fund, annual funding gaps that schools had to include EDINA. And just a reminder, this is the chart that shows the funding gap, and that the state funding has not kept pace with, historically kept pace with inflation, even though we have received increases, which we very much appreciate. And included in detail in your board packet, along in summary in the presentation, are the overall parameters of the base plan. What's important to understand is a base knowledge of the plan that we start with, whether it's enrollment or expenditures or revenues, because enrollment, for example, will change between now and October and November when we do the final budget. And so it's important to understand where we start with, and then any variations up or down, we understand why. Go ahead. And the reduction number, so with the 1718 mid-year reductions, that, with all the projections come into play, that will improve our projected fund balance to be roughly between five and, five and a half percent, and, which is an improvement. And then the reduction amount of a little over 1.7 million, that's included in your packet for 1819, that would result, with all projections coming forward, a little over 6%, 6.3% fund balance. And then in order to continue to maintain a 6% fund balance into 1920, we would need to make an additional $1 million worth of reductions in 1920. But we, we have an annual process for that, but we always look multi-year to say, how does this addition or reduction, whatever we're talking about, impact future years? And so we did talk about that at Finance Committee. And in terms of the process, we also looked through previous Berg budget reduction, reallocation, and revenue generation items, and also Budget Advisory Task Force items from previous years as we developed this list of reduction ideas.
Margot, can I just have you clarify? You said that based on mid-year cuts, our fund balance projections are better than we had thought?
Yeah, the board approved the final budget, yes. And then with these mid-year adjustments for 1718, if all other projections hold true, it will improve our fund balance as of June 30th, 2018.
Thank you.
It's that multi-year planning approach, looking at the current year, the upcoming year, and then two years forward.
So the process that the team used, our leadership team, we, first thing we did was spend quite a bit of time looking at staffing data, ensured the alignment with the details within contracts and within the budget. We talked about how we're going to establish priorities and focus for the budget, and those are on the slides that I'm going through now. Principals work closely with their teams in the buildings to propose their reductions, as well as the district leaders, the district office. And we resort, we, in front of you is a chart that was presented to you last Thursday, and I'm not going to go through each one of them in detail, they're all laid out within the report. Primarily at the elementary, middle, and high schools, the reductions took place through staffing, enrollment, schedule. So manipulating those three things at any one of those schools resulted in reductions. The changes that were made still have class sizes below the class size guidelines the board has presented. Athletics and activities, for example, will be working with their advisory team to identify fees and staffing. And then within district office, teaching and learning, looking at materials as well as staffing, buildings and grounds, getting to supplies, materials, and staff. And then district-wide, Margot, do you want to talk a little bit about those? That's your.
Under the district-wide area, in the long-range based planning parameters, we plan for an average amount of retirees in the variety of bargaining units we have. And then they're typically as a savings, because newer, new hires come in at a lower level. We had higher than average retirees.
as well as the district leaders, the district office. And we resort, we, in front of you is a chart that was presented to you last Thursday, and I'm not gonna go through each one of them in detail. They're all laid out within the report. Primarily at the elementary, middle, and high schools, the reductions took place through staffing, enrollment, schedule. So, manipulating those three things at any one of those schools resulted in reductions. The changes that were made still have class sizes below the class size guidelines the board has presented. Athletics and activities, for example, will be working with their advisory team to identify fees and staffing. And then, within district office, teaching and learning, looking at materials, as well as staffing, buildings and grounds, getting to supplies, materials, and staff. And then, district-wide, Margot, do you want to talk a little bit about those?
Under the district-wide area, in the long-range based planning parameters, we plan for an average amount of retirees in the variety of bargaining units we have. And then, they're typically as a savings, because newer, new hires come in at a lower level. We had higher than average retiree submissions this year, so we were able to gain some additional savings there. Professional development allocation, we have some additional funds there. Freezing supply budgets all across the board, so no inflationary increases in the various departments, district office, and out at the sites. Some contracted services within the business office, and then some savings on summer interns and dues in the Human Resources Department. And one enhancement request for additional section of second grade at Concord. That class is currently in first grade. It's a larger class, and so we need to continue that forward into second grade.
So, as the administration also did their work, we also want to propose looking at our three studies for looking at 1920, which we'll start with, if these are studies you would like to go forward with. Elementary instructional paraprofessionals, are we deploying all our paraprofessionals in an efficient way to support all student learning? Can instrumental music be scheduled to ensure instructional time is not interrupted? And then, secondary schedules, are we efficiently scheduling students in our secondary schools that maximizes time and human resources? And are these schedules sustainable for the future? I think it's important to ask those questions. With the, with the lack of, with the funding gap that Margot demonstrated with the, with the chart, I think we, we need to continue to ask these questions on how we're delivering our learning in light of that gap. So, just so that we are delivering efficiently and using it in a transparent, using our resource in a transparent and effective way. So, with that, that's really the budget presentation.
A couple of things. One, thank you. One, I really appreciated when we did have a work session on this last week, that all the representatives of the different areas of budget cuts were there to actually answer direct questions with the board, which was really, really helpful. So, appreciated their time. On these particular areas of study, could you maybe explain a little further in depth what some of those examples might be? Just 'cause they're kind of, kind of broad. I know that we were given some examples on the paraprofessionals, having to even out certain things.
Right. So, some of the, is really looking at the class size guidelines and how paraprofessionals are deployed related to those guidelines, and who has guidelines in front of me. I know there's looking at the continuous progress pairs at Highlands, as well as at Countryside, to see how those are deployed. So, looking at those, and I guess the question I have as a superintendent, are we using paraprofessionals to impact student learning, is the question I think we can ask, and truly make sure we're maximizing that resource. Grade five instrumental music is, the question comes, is there a better time to do that? Can we schedule that differently? As it was reported, as we did the study, that, that we have instructional time that's interrupted throughout, throughout the day for students as they go to instrumental music. And then, secondary schedules, I think it's really looking at, that's looking at how do we coordinate the, I think one piece of coordinate the secondary schools between the middle schools and high school, is one piece. And then, you heard some of the discussion in the previous presentation around the schedule, and really continuing to maximize it for personalized learning, but also making sure that we're doing it efficiently.
Okay. So, I know with secondary schedules, does this, we haven't looked at our middle school schedule yet. I know we're gonna be taking a look at that probably next year. Does this probably, could this possibly affect the concept of the A-B schedule, as in A-day, B-day?
It could, I suppose, if we look at a more efficient schedule.
Okay.
Or a different schedule.
Okay. And then, on the grade five instrumental music, do you think that, that, taking a look at that wouldn't mean potentially considering not offering grade five band or orchestra?
I think, I think we'd have to, I, not knowing that we have not talked about what it could be, I don't know if I can answer that question right now. But I would say that we need to look to see how we can still offer instrumental music in a way that's efficient, but not, so it's not, we're not interrupting class.
So, that's actually, that's the word that kept making me cringe, the idea that instrumental music is interrupting instructional time. When I, I would say that we have committed instructional time to music education, and that that, we value that. And I know it's a little bit of a tangent from this particular presentation, because it's about this year's reductions and enhancements. And I want to commend that work. It was surprisingly, surprisingly joyful, really, to hear how some of the impact of all of the teachers who were serving our students this year will still be there next year, even with these reductions. The impact on students, especially with math, and just the creative responses to these cuts. And I think that comes from the leadership, it comes from the teachers, just all around. This is, this is rather a joyful response to a very difficult budgetary reality. So, I want to start there. But where I started here with this instrumental music talk, though, is that it's, from my perspective, a valued part of fifth grade education, and bumping it to sixth grade would be a loss, not an enhancement. It's not interrupting these classes. Even though students aren't as focused on reading and math, I think that's to our district's credit, that we, we value so many things beyond just maybe the easy trap of a lot of schools, of just put them in front of the calculator a little longer, put them in front of the textbook a little longer. And even some of the maybe creative solutions of, okay, well, they won't move it to sixth grade, but what if we change the schedule, put it through community ed? You've drastically changed the access to it, the emphasis on it. You've changed our message around instrumental music, that it's not there in fifth grade. And it's not the be-all, end-all, but I definitely don't like the setup of it's, it's a distraction from instruction. I don't think it is.
It's the, yeah, to, just to clarify that, it's the, in any one day, what is that the student may be involved in instruction in the classroom, and then those students would leave that instruction. So, it's more within that day, how do we schedule that? And, and I hope you know that these are proposed studies, and maybe it should say proposed studies. So, if there's a study that you don't think we should pursue, then please let us know that, and we'll...
Yeah, and I want to stop short of that, 'cause I don't want to preempt looking at it.
So, I'd like to make a comment or two real quick. I agree with both my colleagues that these are important things to look deeper into, but as a whole, so I am serving the treasure function. So, I've been working closely with Margot and John and the team over the past month or two. This was not an easy-cut process. I commend the administration. What they did was work with the different principals at every site, and asked them to propose a list of different types of profiles, things that are not easier to cut, 'cause nothing's easy to cut. These are school funding issues that are faced statewide. So, which have the least impact to students in the classroom, kind of as a high level? Which of these are things that we can do or can't do, a middle level, and a harder level? And from that, to get to 1.7 million dollars in cuts is a pretty big deal. So, Amir used the word joyful. I also, I used the word relieved, which is similar emotion of knowing that we're giving the kids the best opportunity we have now to properly allocate our resources. These three are things that I asked them to put on the board meeting for tonight. I agree the wording's not best in grade five in some of these, so the points are well-taken. But I wanted the community to get a sense that even though we did the referendum, and even though we did the levy, there are issues of school funding statewide. What we have to do is a couple of things, well, a few things. The first one is, do a good analysis, incorporate our principals and our teachers who are on the front line, so we make sure we cut things that have the least impact. And I think the administration did a great job of that. I take no credit for that. The administration did that. The second thing we need to do, and we're already working on a strategic plan over the course of this year, is to also bring in the community, and bring in over time, all of these thoughts, to make sure we touch the classroom as little as possible as state funding crunches take place. And the third thing is, to really reach out to our state representatives, which we will do much more actively in the middle part and latter part of this year, to try to push for state funding. At the State of the State address, or Union address, or whatever cool title it was last week, several different politicians spoke about the idea of supporting school funding in a more meaningful way in public schools. So, that's something I think is really important, and if we execute as a team on all of those three things, we'll continue to make sure we have what we need. But I'm very complimentary of the work that the administration's done with John and Margot and Led, and I think that this could have been painful. So, I asked to have these kinds of things put on here, because these were just in Level 2. So, these are things we all need to be aware of. We had amazing volunteers here this morning, and amazing people that give so much time to our school, and that helps our overall education for our kids. But there's some things we're just not legally allowed to spend money on, or we just don't get from the state that we need to push for in 2018. So, I think you guys did a great job, and there's always room to improve on things, but this, this was a really thorough process.
I have two quick questions from a 35,000-foot view, since we're being taped, and some folks will be watching. I think some people have a question about how did we get into this position? Why almost $2 million? Just real quickly. And the second thing is, people are wondering, we just passed a $13 million referendum, and now we're asking for more money. Just a quick answer to those two questions, if we could.
So, to address the first question, annually, there is a funding gap. And this was, if you've attended any of our referendum presentations, both questions were done at each presentation in terms of when we receive 1% in state funding for our district, that's about $550,000 of a portion of our revenue budget. It isn't all of our revenue goes up. So, this year that we're talking about, we're receiving 2%, and that's $1,050,000 in a portion of our revenue, not all our revenues. If we have a 1% increase in expenditures, it is, or, yeah, 1% increase in expenditures, it's $1.1 million. So, even if we hold, hold our, some people would say, if you got 2% new funding in revenue from the state, you should be able to have 2% new expenses. Well, in that example, it'd be $2.2 million in expenses, and a little over $1 million in revenue, and we're already out of balance, because most of the other funding sources stay relatively stable. And so, unless there's a drastic enrollment increase, which we're a steady, and stable district, but we're not growing at 5 or 6% enrollment a year like some of the suburbs can be. So, does that answer your question on the first? So, that's an annual, and that's not unique to Edina. It is for everybody. And I just actually received a new chart today that is unique and shows Edina's history on this funding gap. And I just got it probably a couple hours before the board meeting. So, I'll try to incorporate that into our presentation for the night, so that you're able to see Edina's data, along with this, this type of data. And in terms of answering the other question about the referendum, the referendum was about continuing our excellence in our programming and what we have. And in 1718, we did some things in terms of, we had set aside actually, for at least three years through Finance Committee, set aside dollars to be able to open the additions to the buildings, increase square footage utilities, cleaning, maintenance costs, and also bring ninth grade to the high school and have a new schedule. And those are the major items, but the list goes on. So, we were already, we funded ourselves for 1718 to get to the voters, and so that, that's what that increase is paying for, and is in ongoing fashion. And really, what we're talking about in reductions today is that annual funding gap, question number one, that we're dealing with.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
If, are we wrapping this section right now? Is that what we're doing, if we're done? If there's any more questions?
So, no, no, I just have, I have one question on those last three.
No, no, I want Ellen's question next. I'm not gonna interrupt her question. I'm just saying, before we finish this section, let's just make sure we tell the timeline, so the community knows what's happening.
So, I am just wondering about those three studies that you're proposing. And I don't want it to be a conclusion after this meeting that these are the, the studies that we are. I think the board needs to discuss this some more. Is that, is it, do we, we have consensus on that? I'm seeing some...
Yeah, these are examples.
Okay.
I was, I was wondering if you could address the, the cuts that were proposed at the middle school. I thought that our principal did a great job in explaining that. I was wondering if maybe you could recap that for us, Dr. Schultz?
I'll try to the best I can. So, that, the middle school reduction is going to use the flex time to provide math support. So, in the past, there were two teachers that would provide that support for students that were struggling in math. And so, in this case, they're gonna use the current staffing, and not have that extra one teacher, and use the flex time to provide the support to them, to the students. And at Valley View, it's some, some reduction in electives and learner support, but, but I think primarily based on enrollment, and then some clerical time.
Great. Thank you.
So, Matt asked about next steps. Well, we'll continue to study this budget, budget transfers and reductions, and we'll report back any modifications. The board's gonna have a listening session on April 2nd at 7:00 PM here in the boardroom. Preliminary approval of the budget is on April 9th, and final approval of budget has to be done by around June 30th, 2018.
These cuts will be...
These cuts will be approved by the board, or not approved by the board, on the 9th, though.
Correct.
And, but the public can weigh in on the 2nd.
Correct.
Thank you.
Or anytime via email.
Well, of course. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I do agree with what Matt and Sarah, what everybody said about this process being very well-done. Budget cuts are never easy, but I think that the process you've done, the people that you brought before the board on March 15th, that was an incredible meeting, to be able to talk to everybody. I agree that these cuts, while on not what, you know, we would never choose cuts, you have managed to present cuts, I think, that are least painful from where we could have ended up. So, I want to thank you on behalf of everybody. That includes, concludes budget for today. Next item is...
Motion to adjourn?
Denied. All right, next is the school board meeting dates. There is a proposed calendar included in the packet. And if you believe that these will be the only meetings, you are misguided. They will have, these will be our regular meetings. We, I'm sure we will have additional work sessions beyond what's listed here. If people have any comments, they should email myself or John with comments, if they have any now. They're welcome to make it. Otherwise, this will be before us on April 9th for approval. Anything tonight? Sounds good. We'll go to policy updates. I think, so, Amir, 533-702-903?
And remember, we moved on full.
Yep, 628.
That's right. Okay, so, student wellness, it's largely a reorganization. We did move a lot of things around from guidelines over to food services. There has been a committee that's been doing extended work on this, from the district's level here. And a lot of the, the ongoing progress in the district is coming from them, and policy has been keeping up a little bit here. Also, we, we've been working with a registered dietitian within our district through Chartwells, and alongside this committee to help make progress. So, we're updating the policy now. It was updated a couple of years ago, more substantially, and this is sort of just continuing to, to keep up with it. There have been some categories added now to the guidelines that were updated last time. That's the end. It'll be an ongoing, ongoing effort, so we'll, we'll see this one again. The policy 702, only a few changes. One of them, significant is that the cash flow balance that we're gonna maintain as a district will be reduced from 2% to 1% in an ongoing manner. And then, that's significant, the federal Job Z line has been struck, as that was, correct me if I'm wrong, but one-time money from quite a while ago, and the district has been saving it and growing it, and finally committed it now. And so, having it referenced in our policy is no longer needed, necessary. Good. Also, policy 903, visitors to school district buildings, has, has some more substantial updates, and it'll continue to be updated into the future. Also, we have security walkthroughs with police and fire ongoing, so that may necessitate a change sooner than later, as we get some of their input. There's, there's quite a bit of language change. Some of it's driven out of statute. Some of it's our own efforts to make it less vague, try to have a more clear policy. Some things even, such as visitors to our school buildings, trying to clarify, for example, if it's not your, not your workplace, even if you're a district employee, you're in one of our sites you're not normally in, you're, you're a visitor to the site. We are moving towards single-point-of-entry buildings. We will have that in place in the fall, after this next season of construction. And so, this policy will be keeping up with that sort of reality. me if I'm wrong, but one-time money from quite a while ago, and the district has been saving it and growing it and finally committed it now. And so having it referenced in our policy is no longer needed, necessary. Good. Also, policy 903, visitors to school district buildings, has some more substantial updates, and it'll continue to be updated into the future. Also, we have security walkthroughs with police and fire ongoing, so that may necessitate change sooner than later as we get some of their input. There's quite a bit of language change. Some of it's driven out of statute. Some of it's our own efforts to make it less vague, try to have a more clear policy. Some things even such as visitors to our school buildings, trying to clarify, for example, if it's not your workplace, even if you're a district employee, you're in one of our sites you're not normally in, you're a visitor to the site. We are moving towards single point-of-entry buildings. We will have that in place in the fall after this next season of construction. And so this policy will be keeping up with that sort of reality, which isn't there yet, but it's coming. Also, this policy is more directed towards the school hours use of our buildings rather than some of the extended community use of the space after school hours, after our children aren't in all of the hallways and the classrooms. And then while we're here, the...
Are you done with the 903?
That's right. You want to come to that?
I have a question on 903, Roman numeral six, communication protocol. I'm not quite sure how to rewrite this, but it seems particularly unrealistic at the high school. Because what this says is that if parents want to talk to their student, their child during the day, they must either call the office or go to the office. And I suspect that parents text their kids at the high school if they have a question. And so...
And haven't we discussed that before?
Yeah, I raised this last time, and so, and I know it kind of went away, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to come up with alternate language. But I would ask the policy committee to sort of say, look at this, because it's not realistic to have a policy that we know people are going to violate. And so maybe we can get some sort of language about the high school that applies, but maybe not. So just throw that back to committee.
Very well.
All right.
All right. And then the fourth policy that we move to discussion...
I have a question.
Oh, please.
Sorry, I have a question about this one as well. Because right now, our visitor procedures are variable depending on what level of school they are, and then across the elementary schools. And so I guess it's both a question for John, and then it would be in policy. Do we intend to have, John, a procedure or policy that eventually we're going to have standardized entryway protocol for elementary schools?
Actually, it'd be all schools.
Okay.
And I think it would, and we're working with police and fire to determine what those protocols would be as far as visitors coming into the school.
Okay. So is, I guess, my question is, do we pass this policy now, knowing basically in two or three months, we're going to have to revise it? Because this is not...
Because the procedures...
It's going to be a different procedure.
It could be a procedure that would prompt a change of policy. You could change the policy now with the change, but we know more specifically what those procedures would be.
I guess, so that would be my question to bring back then to the policy committee is, what would be the best thing to do for that, is my question or point?
Sure. And I think I'm inclined to update what we have now and then revisit it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Now you're on to 628. Oh, did you have a question, Ellen?
No, I was just going to mention that this policy really doesn't cover after hours, and maybe at that time, we will also get to after hour policy.
Aren't you discussing with the various entities that you just mentioned, Dr. Schultz, about even after hour-type procedures?
Yep. That will be included.
So that will be helped to inform this. Thank you.
All right. And then the other policy up for discussion is our obligation after the settlement. What we agreed to do was update some of our policy language as well as the student handbook language. Policy 628, student activities programs. We have some language reaffirming our respect for students' rights, for free speech and association within the aforementioned parameters, being within the educational mission of our school and within all the other detailed parameters that Supreme Court cases over the decades have put out regarding the complex issues of free speech for our students and for teachers in our buildings.
All right. Any questions on any of the policies that we haven't raised so far? Otherwise, we are on to action items. Our first action item is start/end times. Can I get a motion to approve the start/end times listed in the schedule as well as the recommendations for the bus stops?
For recommendations for what?
Can I get a motion to approve the start times that are recommended by the administration that are listed in the board book?
Okay, I thought you were just talking about bus stops.
Well, also, it includes changes in bus stops, but...
So, just not detailed changes at this point?
Correct. I got it. We're there.
So can I just ask, staff members that benefit up here in the past month to the front, please? Jeff, and Terry, and Marco, and David, Mr. V. of the board's questions. Troy, Val. So the, as all of us well know, the Edina Public Schools and school boards have been looking, and districts have been planning and looking at start and end times for their schools for the last eighteen months. This, in this phase of the process, starting in September, the board formed an ad hoc committee of board members and began to look at a process to make a decision related to start and end times. And that, first part of that study was to look at the research. And the research really is what is bringing the recommendation forward. The recommendation to have middle school students supported in their sleep health and in their academic engagement, so those later start times hold all that, all the bad environment to happen. The board also looked at different schedules. They looked at what would it mean to change from a three-tier to a two-tier. And we know that the budget level of 42 buses was the budget that we were at, that we weren't going to be able to go over that. Would you decrease your tiers? You increase your buses, so that was financially challenging. They also looked at what would happen if we changed our non-transportation zones and what the impact would be on budget related to that. The board also looked at, examined different schedules by manipulating those variables of routes and the variables of the non-transportation areas. And they have landed on, finally, all of us are recommending, or the administration is recommending, that we look forward the budget for the schedule that's in front of you. The board received community information. They've been receiving emails, quite a few emails. They've received emails from elementary and middle school teachers, from parents, from citizens. We also have had three listening sessions, November 27th, February 8th, and February 27th. And the board has had several work sessions. So we're all here to answer any questions that you have, but this is your time to deliberate on this decision and move forward, acting on the recommendations.
And I just want to note before discussion that we have had multiple discussions on these proposed start times. And what the proposed start times are is to put five elementary schools at a 7:50 start time, the high school in Normandale and OLG at approximately an 8:30 start time, and the middle schools at a 9:20 start time. So we've had a number of work sessions. There is a relatively lengthy report within the board book materials. So that what Dr. Schultz has done is just kind of given a quick overview, but there has been a lot more material presented. So with that, do we have board, any board members that have any?
I just want to add, remember Pat Slaw brought up, just a couple corrections on page three of the Q and A, the typo. The question that's there says, couldn't the district just switch from a three-tier to a three-tier? It should be a three-tier to a two-tier. And then the example was two miles for all students, where it should read, example would be one and a half miles for all students.
I think two miles for secondary.
It was one and a half for elementary.
I'm sorry, two miles for secondary, one and a half miles for elementary. Thank you.
And in terms of the two-tier, a lot of the discussion, people have said, well, why don't we just spend more money? And I think that the biggest issue with the two-tier, and Marco, you can chip in if I get this wrong, besides it's about 1.4 million to buy the buses, then there would be an additional $700,000 per year in operating costs that would come out of our general operating fund. And so if we spent $700,000 a year running 14 buses, then we would have to make a cut somewhere else in the operating budget.
You are correct. It's the annual ongoing operating cost out of the general fund.
And then in addition, of course, we'd have to find 14 more bus drivers.
Yes, and the challenge of finding drivers, because that is a statewide challenge right now.
But Lenny, that's based on running a two-tier system with the current walking distances in place, correct?
Correct, yes. Anybody have any comments on the recommendation of the motion? None? All right.
I typed them up, too. So, well, so this issue's been with us for a long time. In a letter to Edina Superintendent Ken Dregseth dated April 4th, 1994, the Medical, Minnesota Medical Association recommended avoiding early start times for adolescents. In 1996, Edina High moved its start time later. It's a complex issue, and any decision whether to change start times or leave them the same will have wide-ranging positive and negative impacts on our schools, our students, our families, and our community. The district and the board have tried to gather a wide range of information and input, taking into consideration educational research, operational impacts, and comments and opinions from parents, faculty, and staff. I believe it's been a thorough and open process. We've heard from parents that changing start times will require significant changes and some hardships for their family's schedules. Hearing these concerns makes it very difficult to consider upending set family schedules, no matter how well-supported those changes may be by other factors. As a parent of three Edina graduates, we went through a few of these major changes to the elementary start time schedule for our children. And I know that the changes were hard, but we adjusted as a family schedule, we adjusted our family's schedule and worked out, and all worked out in the end. We've heard mixed opinions from our teachers, many of whom support shifting start times, but some of whom have serious reservations. We've explored the impact of different schedules on our transportation program, and we've looked outside the box for other solutions. Our transportation analyst has indicated that the two-tier option is not financially feasible and that the change that we are considering would be cost-neutral. We've heard unanimous support for shifting start times from our school principals and district administrative staff, who see the benefits of these changes far outweighing the drawbacks. And we've reviewed the research-based evidence coming from a wide range of disciplines, including educational researchers, mental and physical health resources, and community wellness studies. The overwhelming majority of evidence-based findings supports later start times for middle and high school students. Based on this objective evidence, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, and numerous other organizations advocate middle and high school start times no earlier than 8:30. To quote one researcher in the field of school start times, quote, "Moving school start times is no guarantee that most teenagers will get the sleep they need, but not moving school start times is a guarantee that they, that most won't." Based on the overall body of input, I believe that changing start times as promised is in the best interests of our students, their physical and mental health, and their educational performance. And so I've decided to vote in favor of the proposed change. But that support is not without reservations. I recognize that this change will be difficult to integrate into many aspects of our communities' lives, including family's schedules, work schedules, and before and after-school activities. Implementation of this change, if the board votes to proceed, will be complex and difficult, and I urge the district and the board to implement a robust process to mitigate the impact on the various aspects of our community that are affected by the change, while also exploring additional opportunities that this change allows. Sorry, I don't speak extemporaneously very well.
Anybody else have any comments? Or questions, by the way, because we do have a team of administrators, professionals who are eager to answer questions, I'm sure.
I don't know if I'm like Ellen, but I have thought a great deal about this and have largely come to my own decision. And while it's great that you're here, many of my questions have already been answered to the point where I feel I can cast my vote. And I don't want to jump ahead of anybody else. So I think I'll do as Ellen did, and I'll read my remarks. I don't know, Lenny, do you want more deliberation?
I wish I had prepared remarks.
It's hard to speak extemporaneously about something that's so complex and...
I want to get your words right.
All of us face tough decisions, and today, a tough decision falls on me as well as my colleagues on the board. Sound arguments exist on both sides of this proposal. I have deliberated this decision for weeks. I would like middle schools to start later and the elementary schools to start earlier, yet not at the level of disruption to the community I see this plan imposing. Because of that, I'm voting no on flipping the start times. I entered this decision wanting to give a win to the administration for their obvious hard work, intelligence, research, creativity, at developing a well-considered rationale and creative solutions to many challenges facing this action. Yet the cost to the community seems to be too great, a cost expressed in, one, rushed, curtailed, or canceled after-school activities for middle schoolers, at an age in which these sparks, as one speaker described them, that do so much to develop the identities of our middle schoolers and their abilities and their peer bonds. Two, disrupting the school of first instruction, the family, and its dinner hour, an event of disproportionate power in the life of our students. Three, I'm concerned with an elementary school release that just seems too early. Young kids getting home potentially at 2:30 to empty houses, or parents paying for additional childcare to cover these last two hours seems burdensome to me. Another difficulty I have is that many of the intended beneficiaries, the middle schoolers aren't even adolescents. Yet I'm in favor of an early elementary start, earlier elementary start time and a later middle school start time. My fundamental problem is with the extremes both these times present, especially the last year, and the spread between the first and the third tier. Some may ask, isn't that what we have already? Yes, but the age placement of the proposed system seems to bring with it the collateral problems I've just mentioned that the current system doesn't seem to have. Facing an opportunity to improve our start times, our administration has played conscientiously and well the hand that it was dealt, but a hand that was very constrained financially. That said, the plan proposed, to me, appears to be a half-measure, satisfying laudable goals but raising difficulties hard to abide. Then what's the full measure? To me, it's two-tier. If we as a school district are going to put our community through such a significant change, attended by many limitations, then why not get it right the first time? Two-tier will cost 2.1 million to implement, depending on the estimates, and $700,000 a year annually, a cost to discern the community would be willing to bear, perhaps through cost-neutral substitutions, perhaps by revenue-generating methods such as charging for bus service from inside a designated parameter, perimeter, or perhaps through a referendum, my least favorite, or a combination of these ideas. Indeed, with the district facing a $2 million deficit, two-tier is not on the immediate horizon. Yet the promise of two-tier, that is, the sound across Edina of opening school bells between 8:00 and 9:00 AM, is a compelling goal. I believe it portends better education in the classroom, more satisfying out-of-school activities, and a better family dinner hour. Some will say, oh, and you've been listening to the grumblers who simply don't like change. I'm sure we've heard our share. True. But when my family's pediatrician and EHS guiding counselor, both professionals who have cared for years about the health and well-being of my kids and those of many other families in the community weighed in against the proposal, I realize we're not just dealing with grumblers. That the flip troubles these competent professionals unsettles me. Finally, EPS administrators, I want to thank you for your concern for our kids and their education. You've raised the awareness of the benefits of more sleep for adolescents and the prospect of increased alertness for, that an early elementary start time would bring to our younger students. Thank you for your leadership in leading the discussion. I vote we table this issue until we can find a way... I vote we table this issue until we can find a way to make two-tier work.
Any other comments? I would kind of like to hear everybody's comments before I kind of go anywhere on this. I mean, I have a general inclination, but I'm curious as to the arguments back and forth. Sarah, where are you, next?
Sure. I did not prepare a speech as eloquent as my two colleagues prior to me. I would say, in general, having been through this process for the second time, that I am very much in agreement, actually, with Owen's comments, and so, well-thought-out and delivered. You know, this started well over a year ago, because we had to get the ninth graders to the high school, so we couldn't not provide transportation. So that was the basis for this original discussion, but the board did say, we know that, you know, there is continued concern around 7:40 start time at that time for middle schoolers and sleep issues. So through that process, last fall and into January, we had many discussions around this, and again, we kind of came to this, you know, we can't get to two-tier, we'll end up with three-tier, but we're not touching that middle section, so it's a flip-flop. And so here we are again, back in that same place. Although, I do want to commend, as Owen did, the administration and the work. This process was so much better, and I really felt extremely thorough, and so I appreciate all the time, the commitment of many staff coming and being willing to continue to answer questions around sports, around other activities, around mental health, and community ed, supporting the possible ramifications of the needs of our families. I, too, fall into the camp of the extremes. We really pushed hard on David and his consultant to get that 7:50 closer to 8:00, to get that 9:20 closer to 9:00, and with the three-tier system, it's just, it's just not feasible. With that said, I still find myself very concerned about the concept of the whole child, and I do still believe in my heart of hearts that a 405 release for our middle school students will be tough when it comes to looking at the whole child and their other activities and all the things that go into their daily lives, let alone homework and the impacts of that. You know, I've been through two middle school students, I still have one currently, who, based on my vote, probably will not be, I will not be popular with him when I get home. But, you know, this isn't about my kids, this is about all of our kids, and I do think that the whole child is important. And I really have strong concerns still around a 7:50 start. I think the research unfortunately does not, is not strong enough to convince me that we know this is right for elementary students. And I looked back today and reread studies and reread emails from families, you know, tallied in my own mind what all those emails were telling us. You know, we do still have a very divided community, not that we didn't know that going into this a year ago or going into it this year. We know not everybody will be happy with the decision, period, end of story. In looking at the research, even the circadian rhythms, you know, I could argue on the other side that I don't think the circadian rhythms are going to really match up great for our adolescents. You know, the major dip, they'll still be in school and expected to perform between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock, when their circadian rhythm will dip. I think all kids are going to have those dip points during the day, and I actually commend our teachers who deal with this on a daily basis, whether in elementary or middle school, and manage those kids through those times of more difficult attention spans and willingness to be attentive. So with that said, I do so, and I do not take any of this lightly, I do not look at it as dismissing our administration, our principals. It is just where my head is still at on this issue.
Matt, you're kind of leaning towards your mic.
I haven't moved, but that's fine.
I saw your hand.
My hand did go out. You caught me. So I am the extemporaneous one, I guess. So I often prepare a written statement, but gave my thoughts a lot of thought and time going into this. So I try to break them into categories the way that I approach the problem set. So at the outset, the administration is challenged with finding the best opportunity for health and wellness of our kids on an aggregate basis, meaning everything that helps them grow as individuals and young people. That brings in the classroom aspects, it brings in the extracurricular aspects, it brings in all of the learning things that we want all of our kids to experience. So how do we best get there? Looking at the health and wellness studies and thinking about what opportunities exist and looking at the financials, the two-tier system does not work. Spent a lot of time on the budget in the past two months, it's pretty brutal. But what we're trying to do is find the best opportunity for our kids today. One might argue, how different is 7:50 and 9:20 than 8:00 and 9:00? And can you start to, you know, cinch those sides in a little bit over the next couple of years of deficiencies, and how might that be an opportunity? Something else that I think about, because as Sarah said, no one thinks about their own kid, for me just putting this out there. There will be times that I'm sure I vote that helps my family, this is the opposite of that. I see my son in the morning, because I work very late at night, or I'm at a school board meeting very late at night. So the next day, that's an opportunity for us to read Harry Potter in the morning or do something. Voting yes for this would also cost me probably $2,000 to $4,000 a year in babysitting, so I do empathize with any families that these changes are hard on, and this proposal would be hard on. But in aggregate, I think about the 8,700 kids. I do have a neuroscience background, I did read all the APA literature, I did read all the medical literature. I have talked to multiple pediatricians, I've listened to people testify how they feel about things, I've listened to doctors come in here, I've listened to teachers from St. Paul and administrators from St. Paul come in. I've looked at how it works in Wayzata, how it works in Minnetoka, and I've thought about the fact that all of our administrators unanimously have thought deeply about this proposal and what it does for our kids. I think it's a benefit in health and wellness for both age groups, and for me, I support the proposal and be voting yes tonight. But with that being said, I do think it is a hard challenge, and I respect everyone's opinion on this team. I do think this board is acting as a team, which I really appreciate being part of, and everyone's thought deeply about the best thing they think will support our kids to reach their highest potential. But I, without any reservation, vote yes on this. So I want to validate some of the concerns of people who are saying no, and not just from the board tonight, but also there were, there were a variety of professions that were saying no, from teachers to doctors, and the reasons were quite varied as well. And some of them were unique to a family situation, but so were some of the yeses, and some of them were looking at the weight of the evidence. I don't think the weight of the evidence to flip is a slam dunk yes, but I think it's a yes. I think it's an overall win, there'll be plenty of students for whom this feels like a loss, either because of their own sleep rhythms or because of their own schedule and other things that they have in their life that are very important to them. And I don't, I don't vote yes to deny any of that, but I think there's a lot of that on both sides. And one thing we haven't really spoken to is a lot of the special groups in our community, whether it be students' special needs, or families' special circumstances, whether it be a one-adult household or a dual-working household. You know, a lot of those got some attention for me for trends, looking to see if there's an overall trend, is one of these proposals more of an impact to those situations or another, and I haven't found that trend. I've found that there are some who say, if you keep what you have right now, you don't understand the struggle of a working household, and others who say, if you dare flip it, you're wrecking everything we've set up as a working household. And I think both of those are very true, and unfortunately, it just doesn't lend itself to me making my decision, because I see that that concern is very real on all sides. This decision is not a financial decision at the last point, because it's a cost-neutral decision, who goes at the 7:50 start, is it the middle schools or the elementary schools? That part's cost-neutral. What got us here was a discussion of how buses and bus drivers are something that we fund every year from the same budget through which we fund our in-school educational programs, our teachers, and our operational resources. And so the only creative solution I see is stop busing people, push it out to where the state finally makes you bus them, and that's two miles away. And I don't, I don't hear a strong desire from our community for that option. There has been a talk also of another creative option of just bill families, $500 per Edina student per year, bill them for the bus. And we've heard some reasoning that that's not, that's not as great of a solution as it sounds, both from an implementation standpoint and then also just straight fiscally. This is, this is the best that I'm seeing, and I know that there are, some of the emails towards the end were sort of just begging us to find something more creative, as if we were looking at this in a very linear point of view, who has to go at 7:50, who has to go at 9:20, begging us for more creativity. But given the constraints of how education is funded, not just in Minnesota, but also in particular in Minnesota, how education is funded, where this money is coming from, that we want to bus our students, I don't see much creativity room left. I do want to say that we, this isn't exactly this proposal from last year in that the elementary schools are down to just two tiers, just first and second. Last year, they were spread across all three. The split from the very start to the end is about the same. Last year, it was a 95-minute difference, now it's a 90, so there's a five-minute efficiency even with all elementary schools on the same tier, which last year, we didn't see as possible. It took more of that transportation analysis to see that we can put the elementary schools closer and move the times closer and save some money, so I think that's to be commended as well. I do, I do think 9:20 is too late, and yet someone has to do it, otherwise 7:50 becomes even earlier with all the other constraints we have. And so in my own mind, not only do I see the research airing adolescents on the side of 9:20, but also I see that as the least desirable time, and so you put it for the tier that only has three years to start at 9:20 and end at 4:00. And I think that's, there are a lot of downsides to that for middle school in particular. They get more homework, they have more after-school activities, and so that's, that's not a complete three-years of middle school versus six-years of K-5 Wash, but that's one thing that weighed on me as well. And so overall, I'll wrap this up, I think it's, it's not a slam dunk, but it's, it's a yes. We should vote to approve this recommendation.
I guess I'm last, unless Lenny's going to talk, so. I have a hybrid notes, but no speech, so. I just wanted to first speak about process. When I first ran for office and met with hundreds of Edina parents and community members, one of the biggest issues that was brought to me about during the election was board decision-making processes and relying on data to make decisions. And I hope that this start time process has been an example of our administration and our entire board committing to providing answers to questions, seeking data, and seeking solutions. And I've really enjoyed working with everyone on the board in this process. I sat on the Start and End Time Committee, and I personally have spent countless hours analyzing reports, analyzing data on this issue, and relying on that data from an educational, mental health, and wellness perspective, I believe this recommendation prioritizes students' health and developmental learning needs first, and that's why I support this decision and will be voting yes. I wanted to give more context to some things that I, I mean, I find concerning as a parent across the district. One, from an elementary school perspective, I understand that there's some elementary school parents that are upset about the elementary school times being before 8:00, and I just wanted to offer two things. One is that we've received feedback from quite a few elementary school educators, and it was resoundingly positive in favor of this change, and they asked us to please make the change as soon as possible, because it extends the morning learning time. And they all felt that it was the best developmentally and in the educational interests of their students, and I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. And additionally, I know that we've gotten a lot of feedback or interest in the study by Dr. Keller in Kentucky, and I personally corresponded with her and asked her, she thought the closer start time was to the optimal 8:00 to 9:00 timeframe, if she felt there would be minimal impact to some of the negative findings that she found. And we did correspond back and forth, and she reiterated that the further away it was from 8:00, the more problematic things became, which was why it was so important for us as an ad hoc committee and why we did sort of harangue a little bit, to get as close to 8:00 as possible, which is how we ended up with the 7:50 timeframe. And I know 7:50 seems far away from 8:00, but we really tried to get to that 8:00 timeframe. From a middle school perspective, I also, I share some of the concern about students' and extracurricular activities and balancing homework, because I do agree it's about a whole student, it's not just about the time they spend in school. But I have to say that I've seen just the work that John Schultz and Troy and Val have done, coming to us with questions, and I fully support and trust that they will be able to figure these schedules out during the implementation process. I know there are going to be kinks in the system, I know there are a lot of complicated logistics to work out. I think as a community, we need to have a little faith in our leaders that they can implement some of these complicated logistics, and I personally do. The last thing I want to say is that I know regardless of what decision is made, there'll be people in our community that will be unhappy with the decision. I just want to send out my hope that we can work together as a community to solve our differences in a productive and constructive way, and if we do have problems that arise, or if after this you are still concerned about something, that we can work on problem-solving and looking at opportunities to come together from this, as opposed to making it a negative thing, because I do think this can be a big opportunity for our community. Thank you.
Well, with four people having spoken in support of it, my notes just kept getting shorter and shorter. And so the biggest thing that I have is that this is a difficult decision, because there are some people that it will impact negatively and other people that will impact positively. I am impressed with the work of the board on this, I'm impressed with the administrators. As I sit here today, I know we haven't asked you any questions, but there's a team of people out here ready to answer questions, and in fact, who have been answering questions for a couple of months. And I think that it does make the decision easier, knowing that you're sitting there and that you have thought about this, and you've got Jeff Jargison, Val, great, now I'm going to draw a blank, Carrie Dolquest, Troy, Margot, David, we've got our, the rest of our lead team, and we've had people attending these meetings and answering questions. We, as a board, have asked a lot of questions and gotten a lot of answers. Do we have every single answer? Not yet, but we have a lot. And so I'm very excited about the process that we've gone through, that would essentially, I'd give credit to John for having put it all together. I do support... Not close enough.
I'll see the thing about me again.
Yeah.
Can you start over?
So I'm glad, I'm glad John's here. I do support the shift in start times. From what I've read, it is what is right for the middle school, and from what our principals and our elementary teachers are telling us, we're going to get a double benefit, that it's right for our elementary kids. So I'm going to keep it at that for now. So I don't know if anybody has changed their mind and have anything further that they wish to say, otherwise, we can take this to a vote. So all those in favor of approving the start times in the schedule, which, for clarity, is a flip of the middle school and elementary, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried? Thank you. We are on to the next motion, which is the implementation year. So can I get a motion to...
Can you hang on one second?
Yes. Talking about Carrie.
Well, we still want to start at 7:50.
Remember, we have to stay here, too. All right, next is the implementation year. Can I get a motion to approve the recommendation to adopt the start times for the 2018-19 school year? So Matt motioned, Owen, Owen, second. I have two agenda items on mine.
On mine?
I don't know.
No, I'm sorry.
Just hand it out to us.
I'm getting at my printed one.
Oh, that's what it is.
Got it, sorry.
So you've got the current copy. Okay, my copy has, start times is the first action, the second item is the start/end times. Matt made the motion, Owen seconded it.
Correct.
Do you have any information you want to give to us on this?
I laid out the, at the last, sorry. At the last work session, we laid out the, kind of the implementation tasks for each of the departments that are represented by the leaders in front of you. We're comfortable and ready to move on this for 1819. And recognize that as, when you make these changes, there are things that will go, that will cause us to think differently, and that's why we're in this business. And it'd be my, my goal to keep you informed on how that implementation is unfolding between now and September.
I know that I sit on the, and I always want to still say C E S B. C E A S, what is it now?
E A C.
Yeah. Anyway, Community Education's, used to be Advisory Council. Okay. So anyway, I know that this has been a topic. I know that their department is working hard to make sure that they'll be able to respond to what will be, in all likelihood, longer after-school needs with the elementary kids. I even questioned again last week, will there be something in place, it doesn't have to be considered childcare, but something in place at the middle schools for those families who don't feel comfortable leaving their middle school or at home? Because we need to make sure we have these options available. And with that said, I know Val has been, is going to look into possibly surveying and finding out what the needs may be, because some of the concerns from our middle school teachers were many, but one being that we do even now have kids being dropped off long before 7:30, which is when they're technically supposed to arrive for the 7:45 start. So, I do have faith that our community ed is already working on this. I know that Troy is looking at some of the things that they need to do. So I just would, would ask that we make sure that we're thinking about all the impacts that go beyond childcare and activities, but the needs of our UMTM students who want to leave early for their math, that we're looking at all the possible ways that we can do this in the least impactful way within the buildings. I would, I would trust, though, I do feel like our administration is ready to do this next year. And although, you know how I voted, I still, I think it's, I think it's extremely hard on a community to wait a year when a decision has been made. I, you know, the decision has been made, that's what it is. We, as a board, will all support that. So now it's time to move forward and, you know, make this work next fall, not wait a year.
At a due process, does anyone on the board not feel this should move forward? Can we ask that question and then?
Are you trying to end the meeting already?
No, I just, I don't have, I don't know if everybody has written speeches for this one, too, but I just want to, I just thought it would be, I thought it...
But I do. What?
Do you write?
I'm writing it.
Are you ready? All right, let's, let's have Ellen give it...
But it's stiff, but it's not, yeah, I can...
I'd be happy to read it, you guys.
But you don't have to.
10, 20, almost.
She's going to be there, Lenny.
And this might surprise you, actually. Normally, I think that once a change has been decided upon, based on sound evidence and reasoning, that change should be implemented as soon as it is feasible. After all, if it's a good idea, it's a good idea to get started right away. However, in the case of changing our school start time schedule, I believe we should wait until the 2019-2020 school year to implement the change. One criticism that some districts have had as they changed school start times is that the changes had major impacts on activities, athletics, and community-based programming. While six months may seem like plenty of time for people to adjust their schedules and prepare for the change in school start times, when I consider both the potential problems and the opportunities that accompany the start time change, I believe a more integrated, coordinated, and thoughtful approach will take longer. With this change in start times, we have the opportunity, not just to fix the problems we had with our previous school schedule, but to incorporate positive changes into the new schedules. We can coordinate those new schedules with improved services and opportunities for our students, particularly at the primary and middle school levels, by working collaboratively with community-based programs, thoughtfully adjusting school-based programming. With more time, we can make adjustments to activity and athletic schedules to ensure that our middle schoolers are still able to be active members of these communities. As an avid Nordic ski supporter for many years, I recognize that the participation of 7th and 8th graders in Nordic skiing will be severely impacted by the start time, since Nordic practices happen outdoors without artificial light. Other districts in the area have had difficulty with middle school participation in Nordic since they moved their start times later, and we need to explore how to make this work, among other activities that are finding hardship with this later start time for middle schoolers. The secondary schools are also embarking on a process to evaluate and coordinate their daily instructional schedules, as we discussed earlier this evening. That process should be coordinated with the changes in start times in order to fully address the impact of these schedules on each other. All feasible options for schedule coordinated, coordination could then be explored, including such things as placing middle school flex time at the end of the day for older middle schoolers, or adjusting timing of activities in athletics and ensuring equitable access. And transportation for enrichment opportunities, such as high school opportunities for double-accelerated students, and participation in such programs as community-based language enrichment, or the UMTM program. Many families have stated that their schedules need more lead time in order to accommodate a change of this kind, and I understand. I am concerned that we will be overtaxing the capacity of our administration, as they are still working hard at managing the construction at our middle and many of our elementary schools. I feel that we owe our community appropriate notice, excellent preparation, and spot-on execution of this start time change. Let's do this right and not rush it.
I'll follow, because I, I understand a lot of your points. In fact, I earlier had, had more, I noticed myself agreeing more with the, with the speakers who were saying, well, whatever you do, don't rush it, it'll take, it'll take quite a bit. And I think I have an own, my, my own mind had an anchor point about making this decision no later than January because of how we talked about it a year ago, giving families that time to respond. The, a couple of things that have, have made me want to do it sooner rather than later, though, were, were not only the idea of if we think this is right for students, then why delay it? Academically, it's right for students, we should implement it. But also, I noticed the biggest, the biggest stressor for a lot of families was that it's such a radical change from June to August, from June to September. And that's not going to get better by waiting a year. That pain is still going to be there. And so, in fact, it might get worse having this cloud hanging over people's minds for a year. The people that say this is what's right for kids, this is what will be beneficial academically, have a year to think that they, the board didn't act on what they, they decided. They let it sit. And the people who say this is horrible have a year to know that it's coming. And that doesn't necessarily make anything better. There are a couple of unique situations where it would be better. And I think that's for families who have, say, for example, longstanding medical appointments, difficult to rearrange on five, six, seven months' notice. I think that's a very real factor. And yet, it doesn't dissuade me away from the overall benefit being to implement in the fall of 18 and going through. And some of the other realities, for example, middle school participation in Nordic, I don't know. I do have some trust in the administration's benefit of knowing how that was a sticking point for other districts, and they might not have known that. So I don't know how well we can respond in our own six months versus 18 months. But overall, that also doesn't, doesn't tip me towards, towards waiting another year. And I'm in favor of, of starting in the next school year, fall of 18.
I have a couple of questions. Carrie, we received a bunch of emails from parents in your program. Just very interested to hear what you think, how fast, do you think Creek Valley can adapt to this change? Many of these parents were saying very much they wanted to wait a year. What are your thoughts?
Tell me more about the parents. Were they parents of special needs students, and how many?
Uh, I don't know, 10? Just my, that's my ballpark estimate.
So I've heard, I've heard from some special, parents of special needs students in our site-based program, and it will be more of a challenge for them. We'll work with them to try to, we can adjust the schedule, that might not be their first option, but if we need to ease into starting that school year, we can do that. We've done that with kindergartners who, when we went to full day, some parents still wanted their children in half-day. We worked out a solution, until MEA, they were half-day, and then they were ready to start full day. I can't say that will happen, but we can work together for that. The flip side is, when they get to middle school, then they will, and some of these kids are upper elementary now, then they will have that morning time again, so they'll end up with reaping more morning time over the course of nine years.
Mm-hmm.
Can we say anything more about that, Jeff?
Just that Val and I, just that Val and I have been working with the, many of the special needs families. We actually had a great meeting later last week where we brought in four secret representatives, or five secret representatives, actually, to meet with the before and after-school programs and to talk about options that, that we can work together to provide for that before-school or after-school care, as it may be, either at the middle schools or at the elementary schools. We feel like with the, with the walk-in time that we have available to us, that we'll be able to meet the needs of those families. And as Carrie said, I think very eloquently, is that within, with an IEP, we're very much able to modify and to accommodate those individual needs of students on a short-term or a long-term basis as necessary. And again, it's an accommodation of need, but we can work within the timeframes that are there.
I was just wondering from Val, David, and Troy, do you feel that you are being given enough time to implement in, and honestly, I mean, you don't have to lie to us. Do, I mean, do you honestly feel like you're being given enough time to implement the changes you need and the scheduling? And I mean, I, I mean, you obviously have very complicated rerouting, and then from an athletic and activities perspective, I just wanted to hear your perspective.
So I'll start with the activities and athletics perspective, and you read it all in the implementation plan, but I think right away, you know, if you voted to approve this for this coming fall, initially, our first action would be to meet with some coaches and talk about the impact for our 712 program, middle school students involved in our high school program, and how that's going to affect those practice times. We alluded to Nordic, we have some issues with, with dance and swimming, and we'd certainly be looking at what are the benefits that we can take from it, and what are the logistics we got to make some challenges and changes to? But then it would be collaborating with the community as well. So our local youth associations and also our swim community, in terms of trying to make sure that we're not hurting our feeder system, so to speak, as it relates to that.
Yeah, and in transportation, whether it was this coming year or the following year, we will be ready. It will take us a little bit of time to work over the routes, but we do have the time to do it, so.
I would concur. We kind of did a practice round, honestly, last year, and tried to get as much information as we could. So I think implementing, we kind of laid it out. Immediately, we'll do surveys with families, meet with building principals and leads to, and continue to work with special ed, but we would be ready.
So we've heard that there'd be some staff turnover, some of the coaches would not be able to continue coaching. Do you feel that you can find coaches for those to fill the slots by the fall for those who said that they can't continue on in the role?
Yes, so, so we certainly, we have some great coaches and advisors and leaders in our programs, and certainly hate to, to lose anybody with this adjustment. But I also understand that it's going to impact families and decisions, and so I think in, in that process as well, we'd start discussing options, and, and do we have any flexibility to work with them and make it work? Can they be part-time and coach with us? So we would try and work with our, our coaches and see if that's a possibility, and if it's not, then we have plenty of time to get some postings out and look for new applicants if, if we need to.
Any other thoughts, otherwise? Sarah?
I guess I, this is more of a comment, I've already shared my thoughts, but I just want to make sure that, that as an administration and principals in the buildings, that they do support their staff, because clearly, this is a huge disruption for their families and their personal lives as well. And I want to acknowledge that, you know, our families will feel it, and some will love it and some won't, but, but that goes for our staff as well. And, and there were many middle school teachers who had great concerns about this, and whether it's, you know, their personal lives or the programs that they participate in, and I just, I want us to acknowledge that at a minimum, and make sure that we support them in their transition as they try to figure out their schedules as well.
All right. All those in favor of approving the start/end time schedule beginning in the 2018-19 year, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried. All right. Carrie, now you can go. Carrie, you could, you could go now, Carrie.
I asked Lenny's bedtime, Jim.
All right, next thing on our, the agenda is the partial roof replacement at Cornelia, absolutely exciting topic. So, can I get a motion to approve the contract for the Cornelia re-roofing? Eric, oh, Erica. Margot, this is, do you have any quick comments?
We have worked with this vendor before, and they do a great job, and it's with, well within budget, and would ask for your approval.
All right. Any questions? All those in favor of approving the contract for the Cornelia re-roofing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the furniture package for Creek Valley Highlands Southview and Valley View? I got a second?
Second.
Margot, you're up again.
This is the final furniture package for the upcoming schools. It's off of state contract, and collectively, altogether, they are within budget, within the furniture and equipment budget funded by the construction funds.
Any questions? I actually have a question. So we've been buying furniture, is this similar to what we bought already?
Yes. We're following the same proto, standards and protocols in terms of what types of furniture we put in the buildings and the learning spaces, and world architects has been a part of the entire process to make, to ensure that. And then also work with the individual principals on what their needs are in the building.
And I know we've only had the furniture in for a year, but are we satisfied with it?
I haven't had any complaints, so that's always good, because by the time it gets to me, it's usually not a good sign.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, all those in favor of approving the furniture package for Creek Valley Highlands Southview and Valley View, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And policy update is moved. Is there any leadership updates, any announcements? Amir, I saw you move forward, that was just like a twitch? Is there anything to add? All right. We have completed the agenda. Are there any objections to adjourning? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.